...meeting of the San Carlos City Council and San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. Our pledge of allegiance will be led tonight by Boy Scout Troop Number 321.
Holo guard, advance.
Sorry. I'm that. Wrong you. Under that.
All your rights? Please draw your name and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Holo guard, please hold charge.
We do have a bit of interference in this room with the low lights, but you did very well. Only knocked them once, that's not bad. Oh, yeah. You fellows like to come up and introduce yourself? We normally do that. I'm delighted to invite you. You go to the mic there so the audience can hear you.
Hi, I'm Morgan Donovan, and I go to Carmont High School.
I'm Dan Hendricks. I don't go to school.
I'm Jonathan Four, and I'm the Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 321.
Very good. Thank you very much. Our next item, our changes to the order of agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would request that we move Item 11B up the agenda through the Chair, whatever the Chair would like, either before nine or right after nine.
Let's move it before nine.
Okay.
And I had a request also to move the Item 10C up on the agenda. Perhaps we could put it after the new 11B. What do you think? So 10C comes after 11B, which comes after 8H. You all got that? Any other requested changes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
City Attorney. My understanding is that the representative from SBWMA may have been going to Redwood City first to have their meeting tonight as well. So we can check and see when you get to nine whether we have a representative that can make the presentation.
Okay. All right. Why don't we do that? We may have to pass it down. All right. So the agenda stands as revised. Next is a report from Flow Session.
There's nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item four, Council Communications and Announcements. Councilmember Doherty?
Nothing from this side.
Lewis?
Just the San Carlos Educational Foundation, the event that we're endorsing from worst to first, I believe is February 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And I'll be distributing to council the communication I got, so everybody's aware of that date of the night of that film. I believe it's February 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00. I had attended one of the San Carlos Educational Foundation meetings, and it was just informative, getting to know you meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Growcott?
Well, just wanted to report that I was downtown last Saturday, and I happened to see Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. That was really nice. And then we had a very successful tree lighting event where sang a bunch of carols, lighted the tree, and passed out some goodies at the, what do we call that now? The Adult Community Center.
Adult Community Center.
Yes. So it was a very fun evening. We all had a lot of fun.
Very good. Would you like to reveal who the Santa Claus was?
He's in this room, but no, other than that, no.
No, we all know who he is. The great Santa Claus, and his wife is just an added touch. Thank you very much, Barry. Councilmember Gazzelli?
I have nothing to report.
And I'll just reaffirm what Matt mentioned in terms of Santa Claus. They were two high points of the last two weeks. There wasn't another, though. There was a, I went to a movie, an introductory movie put on by the county for the 150th celebration. And it was very well done. It was in the Fox Theater. It was a benefit for the County Historical Society. And one of the stars in that movie was our own Councilmember Gazzelli. And he did a phenomenal job explaining how housing was so important, primarily in the North County. We should all get a DVD and just make sure that we understood the full content. I was so overwhelmed by the fact he was there, I forgot to listen to what he said. So we're gonna have to, we have to do something about passing out the DVD. And Councilmember Lewis, if there is a need to have a face in a film, there's your man. He's on top of it.
I heard he's charging for autographs. I don't know.
Right, yeah. He could. Reports to council. We have the new parking, new restaurant parking exemption ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Davids, members of the council, members of the San Carlos community. Just a quick report to you by way of background. In November of 2004, the city council adopted ordinance number 1351, which allowed exemptions to the city's parking requirements for restaurants within the downtown and perimeter area. And that was specifically for restaurants that were over 2,500 square feet in size that were open for dinner five nights per week or more, and also restaurants that encouraged the use of the permit parking program in the downtown area. Another requirement of the ordinance was that the council review implementation results two years after its adoption, and we're therefore before you this evening reporting on the ordinance results. We have not received any requests for the parking exemption to date, but our economic development consultants do continue to believe that the ordinance, the continuation of the ordinance is a continued economic development benefit. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Any questions for Ms. Cullum? So in essence, we'll just hold it as is until we complete our economic development plan, and if appropriate, make changes at that point.
That's our recommendation, yes.
All right. We have a resolution, I believe.
No, no action needs to be taken unless we wanted to change it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the old resolution. Okay. Thank you very much, Liz.
Thank you.
Next, we have the honor of honoring one of our local scouts. We all know what a tremendous job scouting is and does in the community, and how much of a factor it is in building character and helping young people, young boys, as they move forward to be better leaders and citizens in the community. And tonight, we have the honor of giving a proclamation to Alan Rettberg, who is being honored for achieving his Eagle Scout Award. He is a member of Troop 321, and I would like to present this to him. Alan, if you'd come forward.
Good evening, council. I'm Alan's dad, Gary Rettberg.
Congratulations to you and to your son. Would you like to tell us a little bit about what he did for his project?
I would. There's a piece of land between the two tennis courts at Aguelo Park that has been completely undeveloped and used for years. And there's been three Eagle Scout projects that have comprised the development of that little piece of land. One was to level it and put a retaining wall so that another scout could come in and put some pavers in a flat area. And then Alan, this past summer, built three redwood picnic tables so that people waiting for using the courts or just want to enjoy the area would have a place to go and have a picnic and sit and wait. And so, you know, the great thing about this is that it gives the scouts something focus to do that they can actually see through to completion. Alan was able to go up into the Santa Cruz Mountains and actually mill the wood for the tables, so he got the experience of doing that. They're nice, heavy-duty tables. And I can tell you, a few days after they were completed, I went up to take a look, and there were already slurpee stains on the table. So I know, they were getting used. They were getting used. But the great thing about supporting this kind of thing, and really do appreciate the support of the city in this, is the scouts each put in about 100 hours on these projects, and they get to see it from start to completion. And now, all three scouts can go up there and utilize the area.
Very good.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And you go with my guy.
Okay, thank you. He's off at college right now. Two more finals, and he'll be home. Yeah. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, that's our time for public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. I have requests from Pat Bell. I believe, Pat, do you want to speak on this issue? Pass. Thank you. And from Laura Finukey. Laura's with Hip Housing, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor Davids, and members of the council and city staff. My name is Laura Finukey. I'm the Director of Programs at Hip Housing, and I'm also a San Carlos resident. And I'm here tonight to present you with Hip Housing's 2007 calendar. We're very nice to see Mayor Davids at our calendar party last week, where this is a calendar contest where we ask students, kindergarten to fifth grade, to draw a picture of their home and then to write a statement about what their home means to them. And we received about 450 entries for this calendar contest, and we had the difficult decision of picking 12 winners. The cover winner is a kindergartner from Foster City, and he drew this beautiful picture of his home in the middle of a heart. And they're required to write a quote about what their home means to them, and he says very simply that "My home is love." So we use this calendar as an outreach tool to educate the community about Hip Housing's affordable housing programs, which include our home sharing program and our self-sufficiency program for families with children and our home equity conversion counseling program. And we're just very appreciative of the support that the city provides us to continue those programs, and I hope that you enjoy these calendars throughout the year. It's Hip Housing's 35th anniversary here in the community, and once again, I thank you for your support.
All right, thank you, Laura. It was a wonderful reception. The kids were there and received their honor. And, you know, some are barely big enough to draw. It's a wonder they could put together a picture and be so verbal about what the housing meant to them. This is a project that's been going on for a while. I recall four or five years at least that it was started, and so it's becoming a tradition and an institution for Hip Housing. We, incidentally, are involved in the program in a number of ways. Our shared housing program is something that our people use. Our residents enjoy the L'Oreal Oaks, which I think was a Hip Housing program, and a number of other locations around town where Hip has been part of our housing fabric. So thank you very much, and carry on the good work for Hip. Are there any other members or any other audience who would like to be a part of public comment at this point? Then we'll move along to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are to be considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Council, anything for removal? Staff?
We would like to move Item D and actually pull it off of this agenda and continue it to a later time.
Okay, Item D is removed.
I just wanted to state also for the record that I was abstaining from voting on the minute since I was excused from that meeting of November 13th.
Oh, okay.
But I will, I don't want to pull it. I just want my, want the vote to reflect that I abstained.
All right, thank you. Anything from the audience for discussion? And do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Items A through C and E through H?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gazzelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiggle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. Next is our representative, our representative, next is our number, our new number, our old number, 11B. As a representative arrived for this presentation, then we'll move on to Item 10C, which...
Just came.
Just came. All right, we'll go back to 11B. 11B is...
I'm doing that garbage.
We all tuned up for it?
I think so. We'll launch the PowerPoint, and while we're doing that, Mayor and members of council, let me quickly introduce this item, and then we'll turn it over to our SBWMA Executive Director. As you know from our previous discussion on this topic earlier this year, San Carlos is one of 12 agencies that's a member of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, the SBWMA. They manage the garbage and recycling contract for 12 agencies, including San Carlos, and they also operate both the transfer station and the recyclery that's located on Shoreway Road in San Carlos. This spring, the 12 agencies are going to issue a RFP to put out for proposal both of those services, both the garbage and recycling collection and also the operation of those two stations. Between now and then, we're going to approach each of the city councils and ask them whether or not they want to be part of that selection process. Staff is going to recommend to you tonight that San Carlos be part of that process. But as part of that discussion, we want to begin to talk to you a bit about some of the options that are going to be part of that opportunity. So as part of that, we've asked Kevin McCarthy, who is the new Executive Director of SBWMA, to come before you tonight and to give you a presentation on both the procurement process and also some of the options that you'll be asked to consider. So with that, let me turn the mic over to Kevin McCarthy from SBWMA.
We're having problems with this. Mr. McCarthy, just to let you know, we aren't that fast to get through this whole agenda. We move your item up, so...
Okay.
Just to let you know, you might think we're really fast in San Carlos, but we're not. Well, a little bit of serendipity. I just moved to San Carlos, so it was a quick drive here. Okay, great, thank you. Glad I got here quickly. Well, this gets rebooted up. I just, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight for a couple of reasons. At first, is the city of San Carlos has really been a core part of the SBWMA for many years, so I'm really inheriting an organization that was born out of the efforts of the city of San Carlos, so for that, I thank you. And as I just mentioned, I just moved to San Carlos. I was living in Menlo Park, so it was a short move. I'd lived here once before for four years, so it's nice to be back in town here, so...
Well, while they're tuning up the equipment, we're just welcoming you to the neighborhood. And we got a lot of things going on here that you'd probably like to be involved in, so make sure we have your address, send you the notices, and we'll plug you in, Kevin.
Well, I have to say, I served on a commission in Menlo Park, and I don't miss the politics in that town. It's a little choir here, and I say that in a nice way, so having been involved in some of the elections there, so it's a pleasure to be here. If only the computer would work.
Well, we do have the printouts from the slide.
We forgot that, we can go off with those. Yep, want to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Let me flip to the slide that says Member Agency Needs. Just kind of work our way through this and hope the computer catches up with us. This process is really about the needs of the member agency. It's not, it's not something the SBWMA is driving in a vacuum. It's really for the city of San Carlos and our other 11 member agencies. And the first and foremost need is many years ago, back in 1989, there was a state law passed mandating that every city and county achieve a 25%, ultimately a 50% diversion. I just checked some figures earlier today. San Carlos is sitting at about a 46% diversion, so you're a little bit below the, excuse me, a little bit below the state number, the state goal. So as we get deeper into these programs, I think you'll have a better sense of what we're trying to do is drive up the diversion levels and try to do that in a cost-effective way. The other key criteria here is that the existing contracts are expiring here in about four years, both the operations in Shoreway and the collection. So what we're trying to do is very thoughtfully, four years out, put a process together that will get us to a good outcome, get us to cost-effective rates, get us to higher diversion levels.
Excuse me, Mr. McCarthy, I apologize. I know what diversion means, and maybe we all do, but there might be people watching that don't understand what that means.
Yeah.
If you could put that in just a couple, three words of English, please.
It's a, it's a state accounting word for recycling and waste reduction, so...
Thanks.
The other, the other key goal here, as I said, we're trying to, trying to get through a procurement process to set up new services. We're trying to do that in a cost-effective way. Right now, the member agencies throughout the county and our service area have very competitive rates, and the trick is to try to modernize our programs while we keep, try to keep the costs down as much as we can. If we go to the next slide, SBWMA, working on your behalf. So what have we done? We've commenced this process. You had an earlier presentation back in September, I believe you got some detail about what that process was about. We had two main committees that staff, Brian, and others were involved with. We had elected officials involved in that process, and that went on for about six to nine months. I just took this job in September, September 5th, so I'm new to the process, but I've spent the last 16 years in the private sector, working for private solid waste and recycling companies, so I have lots of experience. I'm a technical detail, so you may trip me up tonight on a few procedural questions and just some background, and I'm more than happy to get you those answers. If we continue on in terms of the background, there's been 16 meetings of the PATH and the PAC committees trying to put together the detail for the recommendations tonight. There's been over 50 staff reports put together. There have been workshops with potential proposers, with other cities. We've tried to have a very thoughtful process to get as much input from as many people as possible to put together the recommendations you see tonight. If we go to the page that talks about milestones, I think this is important for you to see. This lays out all of the key dates. There we go. There we go. Caught up with me, the old-fashioned ways. Caught up with technology. So in terms of milestones, I look at these all as touchpoints for each of you. There's steps all the way through the process for you to participate and give us feedback on what the programs are. Next spring, we're going to come back to you with a draft RFP document, which will be the document that we actually release to the proposers. When the proposals come back, you're going to have another chance to actually watch the presentations from the proposers. You'll see proposal summaries, and ultimately, you'll take a vote on who your future franchise contractor will be. So as I said, there's a very exhaustive process here over four years for you to be engaged. So what's the SBWMA's role? Our role is really to be the technical backroom person in terms of putting the documents together, attending meetings like this, and trying to make sure that we're getting the programs right for this community. We're going to serve on the evaluation committee and really be that technical backdrop for you, so that you have that comfort level that we've done a good job getting you all the details on the programs. So what are the key responsibilities for you? We're really starting that process tonight in terms of you reviewing our staff recommendations on the programs. Ultimately, you're going to award a franchise to companies, and there's sort of a balance in this process. What we're trying to do is economize the process and really doing a procurement for 12 different agencies all at the same time. Oh, what's going on here? The key thing is that you all issue the franchise agreement, but there are commitments of your tonnage to the Shoreway facilities. So ultimately, you're going to make a decision about a company that you pick. Hopefully, that's the company that we've recommended to you, but it's important to understand that we're making assumptions about the programs and about the cost effectiveness of a contractor servicing all of the member agencies. So if for some reason you wanted to step back and choose somebody else, there are some cost implications associated with doing that. So in terms of the key decisions for you, you really, what you're being asked tonight is to commit to this process, this multi-jurisdictional process, to go through and look at the core programs and affirm your support for those core programs. We've also presented a number of optional programs for you to look at and really try to understand them, ask questions about the optional programs. We're not asking you to vote on those, but really to give us some feedback about which ones you like. Ultimately, we're going to get the proposers to provide us costs in those options. So when we come back to you with the staff recommendation, you'll sort of have a menu, and you can look through those options and look at the costs associated with them. Once again, in terms of adopting a resolution, you're committing to participate in this process and pursuing the RFP process the way we have it outlined, and essentially not going outside of that process, not running your own separate procurement on solid waste and recycling. In terms of selecting programs and services, once again, there's kind of two ways we're looking at it. There's the core programs, which are the basic programs that would be delivered to each of your constituents. There's the optional programs, which, once again, are a menu that will get costs for you, that you can pick and choose and decide which of those you want. And what we've tried to do with the optional programs, once again, we've got 12, 12 different jurisdictions. We're trying to understand what are the type of programs that you might be interested in, so they're really geared, we think, at trying to get your diversion level up, your recycling level up. So what's the core, the core service package for residential? You obviously have weekly collection of garbage today. What we're talking about is going to one-person crews. Right now, garbage is picked up with two-person crews with, it's really a very outdated system. So we're talking about really modernizing the whole collection fleet, going to automated trucks with one person, giving each customer a wheeled cart of various sizes. And once again, there's flexibility there in terms of the needs of the individual constituent and his service at each individual home. They can pick these various-sized carts. But I think the bottom line to this is, you know, there's some discussion about these carts and what's that going to look like? Isn't that expensive? But this is really the standard practice for solid waste collection across the United States. It's nothing new and noteworthy. It's a very efficient system. The carts are very safe, and they really ease the burden on the resident.
Can I just ask a quick question? Are we still going to be able to offer residents, say, either twice yearly or once a year, whatever it is, spring cleanup where they can put as much stuff as they want out there for cleaning up?
Yeah, that's really at your discretion. We've listed the bulky goods pickup as an optional program, only for you to think of in terms of what's the level of service you want to provide. You can do that twice a year, you can do it less or more frequently, so...
That's up to each member agency.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Really, the biggest change on the residential collection is right now, we collect recyclables every other week. It's something I've been complaining about, some of you maybe have for years too, getting those tubs and taking the tubs out there. The tubs fill up. It really doesn't offer a lot of convenience and really not a lot of service level for the customer. So we're talking about going weekly with wheeled carts. It gives much more capacity for recycling. It's much more efficient in terms of the collection. Right now, we've already sort of taken a step in that way. The yard waste is collected in that cart. So if you imagine what you're doing with your yard waste, essentially be the same kind of program for residential recyclables. And we're estimating that the recycling increases are very significant, upwards of 30-plus percent, because you've got that greater service capacity for the customer, and it's just a lot more convenient. Now, this slide's a little bit fun if you read the fine print. This could be a backyard in San Carlos. It's actually a backyard in Madison, Wisconsin. Happened to just be the best picture that I could find, lining up these various-sized carts. So it's really the visual. On the far right is a traditional garbage can that most of us are probably using today, putting out on the street. And then in varying sizes, you can see the 64-gallon, all the way to the left, and 96-gallon cart. And once again, it's the largest cart to the far left of the picture is basically the same-sized cart you're using for yard waste now. So just picture one out for recyclables, one out for yard waste, and one out for garbage. But there's that flexibility that the customer can pick the cart size. On the multifamily, we're really not talking about making many changes in terms of the type of truck, but as with the residential program, we're talking about going single-stream, which is the fully commingled mix of recyclables. There's going to continue to be a reduced cost, actually a no-cost, commercial recycling service, but much more of an emphasis on trying to expand that throughout the service area. And we're going to continue to offer food waste to commercial businesses, so there's no change there. In terms of the contract terms, this is one of the understatements of the year. That first bullet, our friends from Labor have had some strong concerns about that. When we first went through this process, there was some language about encouraging competitive wages, encouraging worker retention. After various staff work and working with the Labor Council and the Teamsters, we've come back with language. It's a pretty firm commitment to using the existing wage base as a starting point, and then basically, the proposers are going to estimate costs above that going forward. So there's not -- there's really no gray area in terms of the wages and benefits. It's really looking at the current wages and benefits and projecting forward. In terms of the worker retention, there's very strong language there, so that, you know, the people that are doing the service today are going to be involved, working with the future company. In terms of the contract terms, they're pretty much a seven-year with options that go to 20. The compensation for the contractor is a little bit different from today. We're not going to be doing an annual rate review of the costs, but using more indices. One of the changes that has come back since September is originally, we were envisioning just one service collection area, just one company, one service area. One of the changes we made is that proposers can bid a north or a south district. San Carlos would be in the south district. And essentially, all it's doing is giving us an opportunity for proposers to bid on a south or a north or both together. And the thinking is, just by breaking down the size of the service area, it will hopefully draw in more potential bidders, give us a more competitive process, but ultimately, we still may end up with one company. It's really just a way to try to increase the competitiveness of the process. One other thing of note on the contract terms is we're trying to make the contract as environmentally preferable as possible. We really don't know what's a preferred alternative fuel right now. There are some garbage companies that are using biodiesel, some that are using liquid natural gas. So the way we've looked at it is, we want to encourage proposers to give us their best shot in terms of what they think is an alternative fuel or something that's environmentally preferable. We're not requiring it in the contract, we're just essentially encouraging people to propose that. And this last item, I think that's important, is there, we're going to continue in the contract to have the ability to assess liquidated damages. So if there are service problems, like there have been in the last six months, there will be a way for the computer to go dead again. There'll be a way to assess penalties, fines on the contractor for not meeting the performance requirements. I think we are almost at the end here. Let me catch up to my paper. It should be on, what's page 17 of the handout, proposed Shoreway facility improvements. What we're trying to do is, as we go through all these improvements on how materials collected at the street, it's going to have a big impact on the Shoreway facility. So we've started a master plan process for Shoreway, for the facilities there, to see what we have to do to upgrade those, to handle the new materials. We're looking at other expansion possibilities. One other thing I want to note, I know Vice Mayor Lewis at the September meeting had expressed a little impatience with our process and why can't we do this sooner? So there are a couple of things we're working on. We are in discussions with Allied, basically to say, look, if we can do these programs in a new contract, are there any pilots or things we can do under the existing agreement? So we're looking at that. We're also evaluating the Shoreway facilities to see if they can be expanded before the expiration of the term of the contract. Once again, to see if there's new recycling or new things that we can do. So we're going to keep pushing.
Mr. McCarthy, could I ask a quick question?
Yep.
The cost of doing those improvements would be borne by San Carlos or the agency?
Those improvements would be spread back over the rates of all the member agencies.
So it would be the agency that would pay for all the increases, the improvements at the Shoreway facility?
Yeah, essentially, the financing of it could come from different places. It could be bond financing, it could be raising the tip fees. If the tip fees are raised, which they would be, those costs would come back to the member agencies. But it should be an efficient, very efficient way to divide the costs up. The next page at the top, it says estimated diversion impact, tons per year. This is really to give you just a ballpark estimate of what these various programs can do. You can see that the residential programs would amount for the greatest single increase in diversion of recycling. And once again, it's really tied to that increased level of service, giving everybody carts, those tubs and bins, you can only, you know, put so much material out. So we're expecting to see a significant increase there. The other thing, and I've seen this around the country in my travels in the recycling industry, is providing that weekly yard waste collection. It really significantly drives up your recycling level. One thing that's interesting, I think, in having the cart, you're a little more apt to mow the lawn more, do trimming more. And so it's sort of like the material's sitting out there, but if you're only getting picked up every other week, you don't have much of incentive to use that cart. You sort of fill it up too quick, it sits for two weeks. Some of the other increases in recycling are related to facility improvements. Our best estimate, if we did all of these programs, is that this would get all of the SBWA jurisdictions above the 50 percent level. So we're looking at a way of really sustaining what we've done. In some cases, we have member agencies that have 60-plus percent diversion level, so they'll get much higher. In the last table, this is the most dangerous one of all, because it says estimated rate impact. And a year or two or two and a half years from now, somebody's going to pull this table out and say, Mr. McCarthy or Mr. Mora, you're way off, or you're way under, or what happened? So this just gives you that. Really, it's our best estimate on what we think these new programs will add to the rates. Clearly, we don't know what the final numbers are until we get all the proposals in, and that's why we're trying to make this procurement process as competitive as possible, so we get good bids, good proposals, and hopefully get very competitive prices. So with that, I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCarthy?
I had just three.
Sure.
The first actually has to do with the new solid waste carts.
Yep.
If a resident or if someone has more one week than what they generally have, are they going to be allowed to use their own sort of garbage bins? Or are they going to be required to use the solid waste carts that are provided through this program?
Yeah, I'll take a first crack at it. Brian may have some supplemental answer to this. We're really emphasizing people put the garbage in those carts. There's a lot of things you can do with your rates. So I think that may be a consideration for you, if you want to allow that extra cart or can to go out and what the cost would be for that. I really think that's a discretionary item for this council. I think that's well within you setting a rate for people to do that. You could say you can't do it, or you could say if you put out a second cart, it would cost X. Is that?
I guess more of my question was, I just know, like, and I'll take around the holidays as an example, where I generally will have one can all the time. But around the holidays, all of a sudden, I have maybe two cans or, you know, two cans two weeks in a row, and that's it for the rest of the year. So will I be able to use something other than a cart, is my question? And I would sort of say that for all of residents. Or are we going to restrict to just the carts they're provided through the service?
I participate in this process too. My thought on it is, if they're going to be automated, then it's going to be a difficult decision, because it's going to be one driver on a truck with an automated can to pick up. You start putting out cans that don't fit that automatic thing that comes and grabs it and throws it into the truck, that's going to be a problem. So I don't know. Kevin, maybe you know from the industry?
Yeah, it could cause some problems. But I think what's maybe hard to picture is, when you've only had these tubs, you can really fill up your trash quickly. And I think you're going to be amazed at the capacity of having that big 96-gallon cart for recycling. I just, I think it'll be very -- if you're doing it today, I'd say there's a small chance it will happen in the future, because you're going to have much greater recycling capacity.
Just, excuse me, perhaps one option. I know that, again, my mom lives in Fresno. We did that, unfortunately, this summer, and the options for an additional pickup, midweek pickup or whatever, the truck came by, picked it up, emptied it, and so she had to pay an additional rate for an additional pickup, but there was a way to do it.
But at least there was an alternative, okay.
So we may want to consider alternative like that all week then.
Okay, then I'll go ahead. The second question had to do with hazardous materials, household hazardous materials. Is there planned to be any improvement or enhanced services in the transfer station or in pickups for what I would call household hazardous waste, and specifically more, I think, of computerized waste, not so much oil changes and things like that?
Yeah, that's detailed in the optional programs. A couple of options. There can be on-call pickup. We've described that as an option, and that can be computers, TVs, your printers. I think there's another option in there in terms of adding a limited number of those items to the curbside pickup each week. Household batteries is a very likely possibility, and we're going to be doing a pilot, likely to be doing a pilot on batteries sometime in the next year. Oil filters is another one. So once again, there's going to be a menu there. The way we looked at it from the staff level, we didn't want to prejudge -- excuse me, we didn't want to prejudge a program for you, but we felt like if we developed the menu or the option, we can get costs for you from the proposers, and then you can come back and make the decision on which ones you want.
Okay, thank you. And then the last one, are there going to be improvements made to the transfer station and the processes people go through the transfer station? Because just from personal experience, I know one day I can go through there and have a pickup truck, and it's one price. The next day, I go through with about the same amount, and it's a different price. So, I mean, just from the standpoint of what's being charged and records of what's being collected and things like that, are we going to be making improvements as part of, or is that part of the package, or is that something that we as SBWA need to specify?
Yeah, that's a good question. One of the good things about my background is I've done two master plans for facilities much bigger than Shoreway. And the first time I went there, three months ago, I was a little shocked, the traffic flow. It's not the most convenient facility. There's lots of room for improvement. And it's a very typical situation. You had a facility that maybe was great 10, 15 years ago, but the service area's outgrown the facility. So before the new contract starts, we would have completed a master plan, completed a capital improvement plan, and looked at how to make the facility flow better, and that's for traffic, for safety. So you should see a much better facility a few years down the road.
So just from a follow-up question. So part of what we're looking to do is essentially outsource the operation, both of the transfer station as well as the collection, which is the physical pickup throughout the neighborhoods and throughout our businesses. So we would be making any necessary recommendations or improvements actually to the facility to improve either the use of it or the efficiency of it, or the processing of different materials through it, and then just contract with another agency or another company that actually does the day-to-day processing.
That's right, yeah. Since we own the facilities, we're trying to spiff them up and get them running as good as possible for the future contractor. But the issue you brought up is separate from this whole process. It's simply an issue, we own the facilities, they're outdated, and we're trying to see how we can improve them before the new contracts start.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Member Lewis?
I'm still on the speed issue.
Yes.
Is there any way to shorten the process? So let me just ask, if you don't mind, a couple of questions, because you can appreciate by the estimates of what, 30 percent or so greater recycling contribution or diversion contribution? That's huge, right?
Yep.
And wait four years, and I know perhaps, you know, preaching to the choir here, but it seems as though, is the, I realize that getting 12 or 13-member agency moving quickly is difficult. Is it that, or is it more that there's an existing agreement, and it just doesn't expire for four years?
Well, it's a bit of both. And the trick is, if you try to put the programs now on a contract that's only four years old, and say it takes you six months, nine months, or whatever, to design a new program, and you went out to buy the trucks, then you're talking about buying new trucks for a three-year contract, and the economics of it get very questionable. And that's really the big challenge. You need, it's like any private investment, you need a long lead time in making the investment. That's one of the challenges. It's in part the complexity of, you have 11 brothers and sisters that have different ideas about their programs, but if the city of San Carlos said, this is what we want to do, and we want to do it in the next four years, we can make a plan, and you can make great decisions to do that. So there are some alternatives, it just, it gets more costly to do it on your own, but it's not to say that you couldn't look at it.
Right. And that's, I guess, because we have an existing contractor, and so they wouldn't want to make that capital improvement for just a three-year contract, right?
If they're compensated and to what the contractual standards are, they're not going to object. It's just if you make that investment in a $200,000 truck, you need several trucks, you know, you're paying the trucks off over three or four years instead of seven or 10 years.
Sure, sure.
You can do the analysis.
And do we have a buyout provision in the current contractor agreement that you know?
No.
Okay.
No. Contract expires, Brad, the contract expires December 31, 2010.
Right.
Of its own force.
I understand. I'm just trying to see if there's any way that, because it seems, I'm sorry?
I understand. You say, is there some way to terminate it sooner? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
It would be, when you consider the amount, in the contract every year is what, 38 million? Or, I mean, it's a lot of money. It's not easy to have someone walk away from that.
Right, okay. So it's really the current contract agreement, not necessarily the pace at which we might be able to move if it were being terminated sooner.
Yeah. But once again, if I may get myself in trouble with this staff over here, but if you want to have some sort of a planning session, study session to look at ideas, there are discrete programs that maybe make sense for San Carlos. You just, it's a matter of maybe having a discussion about it and seeing what's practical. It's not a matter of there's nothing that you can do.
Sure.
But, you know, maybe that's worth a discussion.
Okay. Well, thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gazelli?
No, the other council people have pretty much asked all the questions.
Councilmember Giroca?
Yeah, I have a number of things here. One, I just wanted to, since it was already asked, Councilmember Doherty talked to you about the traffic, and you answered that very thoroughly, but I just wanted you to know I had it down here so that you know.
Yes.
It is a concern, absolutely, yeah. Could you explain about number of employees? Because you said, under one bullet point, that we were going to automated trucks, one person from two.
Yep.
And then later, when you were talking about current contract terms... And then later, when you were talking about current contract terms, bullet point with labor, you were talking about retaining employees. And I actually had a, this is about six months ago, I guess, well, it was before May, I had a very lengthy conversation with a lady with the union suggesting exactly that, that all the employees, current employees be kept. And the question I had at the time was, while I can understand their position, if, number one, we're looking for efficiency, and number two, if you've got a new manager coming in, essentially a new boss, why should that person or that entity not have the freedom to look around and look at who's doing what and how well they're doing it and make some decisions?
Yeah, I think, and the union representative can probably speak to this too. The idea is that, that the current employees that are in place, so long as there's, they're given the first right essentially to a job, they're there, they're available for the new contractor, and there's some, so many day provisions for that within the contract. There's nothing in the worker retention language that says that the new contractor has to retain more workers than they need. And they still have to make the decision about those employees, but essentially saying, this is this pool of employees, and we're going to lock them in so many days in advance of the end of the contract, and they're there to be evaluated as new employees. I said, maybe that can be clarified by the union representative. But the language is, our intent is very clear too. If you need 100 drivers, but there's, you know, 140 drivers that were retained or that could be hired, you're not going to have to keep those extra 40. That's not the intent of it.
Very good. Another question I had was, I know we get, currently we get street sweeping through the same company. I think they subcontract it, but I don't see anything being addressed. Is that because it's a subcontract or?
That's, I don't know the answer to that one, but.
It's part of the rates at this time, and presumably that's the sort of thing we could explore with the new contractor as well.
So it is a subcontractor, so yeah, that could be evaluated down. I think it would be something worth looking into. I think right now, some of the street sweeping services we get, and it's not necessarily the fault of the contractor, but it leaves a bit to be desired. If you ever watch one of these vehicles swing in and out of parked cars and so forth, you kind of wonder why they're even out there sometimes. But yeah, if that could be looked at. The, the other thing I didn't see anything on is downtown containers. And I suppose, you know, if we're going through this process, if there's something that a contractor would bring in as a recommendation of, you know, similar to the curbside containers, you have this automated thing, and I suppose downtown containers don't have automation to them because they're usually concrete and fixed in place, but, but things that, you know, might be better containers, and I don't think we're all that enthralled with the ones we have. And then another thing that we've talked about, but haven't taken any action on, is recycling in our downtown for newspapers, cans, and that sort of thing, and designs that might be available with that as well.
Yeah, I will definitely follow up with you. In our summary, it was about 150-page document that I don't believe you have in front of you tonight. There was an optional program that related to downtown containers. I can't speak to the details, but I'll get back with each of you, I'll send the information back to staff.
It is something, by the way, that we struggle with, especially over the weekends, and if we have special events, things overflowing, and then, you know, it's a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Just a couple of procedural questions. Is it possible to have two providers, one for trash and one for recycle?
It is possible, and it has been done places. It was our analysis based on talking with other jurisdictions in Northern California and our research that it made sense to keep all of the services with one company, but split, split the service area geographically. You know, it's been done in San Jose and a few other places, and, you know, there's been some mixed results with that. I just, it's been our experience, it's better for efficiency and management of that, and really coordination of the effort. So for example, if you're the facility operator, it's just, it's just more efficient to be dealing with one company with issues and not having to deal with multiple contractors. It was, as I said, it was looked at. I was not part of those deliberations, but certainly we could provide you the backup on that.
Okay, thank you. And then there's been a lot of question tonight about, could we do this or can we do that? I noticed in your milestones, your RFP and agreements are approved somewhere between May and July of 2007. What's our drop dead date as to getting new things that we might want that may not, that may be special to San Carlos?
Well, I think it's outlined in the staff report. There's the core set of programs, and there's the optional set of programs, and there's lots of flexibility in the optional. If you had a question, disagreement, or wanted something to the core programs changed, you know, that's something we need to nail down in the next couple of months. One, it's really, it's a timing issue. It's also, you know, the practical matter is if a city chooses a program that's dramatically different from the other 11, it raises the question as to how we're going to deal with that material at Shoreway. Shoreway is really linked integrally with the collection program. So one way we've dealt with this is we have the town of Hillsborough that has some different ideas about some systems and programs outside of the other 11, and we essentially said to them, what we'll do is we'll go through the process with you, but what we'll do is we'll put a special section in the RFP for you, and you'll have to pay for the staff work and the detail on that, but we've made that accommodation. So there is a way to do it, but we're very, we're very time sensitive on the schedule.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other council questions for Mr. McCarthy? Thank you very much.
Thanks. It's nice to be in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. We have two requests to speak. The first from James Fergus with Teamsters Local 350.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, City Council and Staff, Jim Fergus, Teamsters. I represent most of the workers out there, the drivers, the equipment operators, the sorters out there at the facility. And what I'm here for is to ask your support for the recommended language, in particular the labor language, the worker retention language, and prevailing wage language. So, why don't you read it over? If you have any questions, or if you have questions now about, I know Councilmember Matt, you had some questions about the worker retention language. I thought Kevin explained it very well, so if there's anything else.
Any questions for Mr. Fergus? We're okay? All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next, Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. Those 96 gallon carts are terrific, and they hold a lot of stuff. But if I have one for yard waste and one for recycling, they're huge. Where the heck am I going to put the thing? I would like to have, and now, if you want more than one of them for yard waste, you have to pay $60 for the second one. You get the first one free, but then you have to pay for the second one. I'd like to have the option of having two 32 gallon recycling carts so that, you know, I can fill up the first one and put it in the backyard or whatever. I don't have to have it on the side of the house and have this humongous thing taking up space. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
One more thing.
One more.
The food waste composting recycling program is very exciting to those of us in the composting community, and we'd like to see it expanded as much as possible. Allied Waste did take containers to the charter school because the kids were studying recycling, and they brought the containers into the cafeteria, and the kids are now composting their scraps, which I think is terrific.
Very good. Thank you. So from a council perspective, we need to keep in mind some of these options and perhaps come together in the next month or so and deal with what we've heard and whatever else might come to mind. So let's get that scheduled on a future agenda. And we have, there are no other questions. We have a resolution before us, a resolution for commitment to the South Bayside Waste Management Authority Contractor Selection Process.
I would move adoption of this resolution. Resolution number?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Doherty and seconded by Councilmember Grocott. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. All right. Now we're moving along to item 10C on our amended agenda. 10C is consideration of a resolution amending the amended and restated exercise of joint powers agreement for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department in consideration of notice of termination options. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the Belmont Fire Protection District and City of San Carlos negotiated a revised and restated Joint Powers Agreement, JPA, for fire service that went into effect July of 2006. That JPA included a provision for a new funding formula contingent upon passage of a funding measure in both San Carlos and Belmont. Those measures failed in both districts, however, thus leaving the funding distribution equal for both parties. San Carlos and Belmont each have the option, per the JPA, to submit a letter prior to December 31 of this year that would set in motion termination of the JPA effective June of 2007, basically a six-month termination. San Carlos opted not to submit such a letter at its regular meeting of 11/27 and chose to move forward with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department as equal partners with the Belmont Fire Protection District. The Belmont representatives, however, at the department meeting of 11/29 suggested an unwillingness to work with us as equal partners, and suggested that Belmont may submit a letter terminating the JPA unless San Carlos agreed immediately to a payment formula that subjected the City of San Carlos to a higher proportional annual cost for fire service. Additionally, Belmont representatives at that meeting suggested that another assessment vote in May be considered as a means to fund this formula. In consideration of this discussion, the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department opted to ask that each entity, the city and the Belmont Fire Protection District, consider an option that would allow additional discussion on revenue measures and funding allocations. And that option is really what we're here to discuss this evening. The resolutions on tonight's agenda, if approved, would authorize an amendment to the JPA to grant either the city the option to submit a notice of letter prior to June 30, 2007, that's pushed back from December 31 of 2006, to trigger an expedited termination of the JPA, either within a six-month timeframe or at a fixed date of December 31, 2007. And that's the basic difference between the two resolutions that are before you this Belmont, at the, at a special meeting on December 7th, provided direction to its staff to prepare a resolution amending the JPA to allow an additional six months to submit the letter for expedited termination with a fixed date of December 31, 2007, provided that San Carlos agreed to pay 53% of the departmental costs effective July 1, 2007. In effect, they've agreed with the one resolution in your packet on two points, that being that they would grant the additional six months to trigger the expedited termination, and the expedited termination is defined as the fixed date of December 31, 2007. At the staff level and per the discussion at the Belmont-San Carlos, or the Belmont-San Carlos Fire District meeting, those two points, I think, we were in agreement on in that that option would provide for the discussion of additional funding measures, of additional formula opportunities, and set the termination date for the JPA at December, virtually a year from now, which would give us a more reasonable time to accommodate the provision of alternative fire services if that became necessary. The caveat, however, that would suggest that the funding formula actually go into effect, the 5347 funding formula putting the burden on San Carlos, July 1, is something that is not acceptable to city staff as a recommendation in that is in effect implementing the very point of contention that has been before this city council for the past year in negotiating the new funding agreement with the Belmont Fire Protection Department. Staff believes that moving forward with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department as equal partners is the best solution. We believe it's the best solution for both San Carlos and Belmont. Expenses are the same in each jurisdiction. Each jurisdiction has two stations that we're manning. Contract proposals from third parties indicated that the expenses were the same in that when we both went out for bids for fire protection services, both of us received proposals from other entities that were for the same value, indicating that the cost of providing the service was the same. The voting authority on the board is the same. Each of us has two voting members, and so there's an equal split, and neither side have any controlling influence or authority. Station activity, measured by call volume, is roughly the same as, if anything, the past year in talking with the fire chief, it would appear as though the call activity in Belmont is higher than it is in the City of San Carlos. And given all of that, the City of San Carlos could take the position that, well, we have more people, we have more property, we ought to, on a one-man, one-vote principle, have more authority, more voting authority on the board, and Belmont perhaps should pay more because there are more calls. We're not suggesting that. We're suggesting that, that really, both sides needs to come together here and work as equal partners, recognizing that that's in the benefit of both parties in terms of economies of scale and moving the department forward. Having said all of the above, we do believe that there are some options that might include a formula, that might include enhanced cost recovery means, that could be looked at, that might provide a productive and fruitful means to address the concerns of both parties. One suggestion that has surfaced that we haven't really fully defined and explored is having a more aggressive cost recovery mechanism that would have the revenue going directly to the fire department. That cost recovery is in exchange for services provided by the department to businesses and/or apartments that require annual inspections. If there is a preponderance of those commercial entities and/or apartments existing in one district vis-à-vis another, the proportion would be borne by that jurisdiction, albeit on a fee-based system with the revenue going directly to the department, lowering the base that then could be split on a 50-50 basis. We've not been as aggressive on cost recovery, I think, in recent years as we could be or perhaps even should be, and we would suggest that that would be perhaps one alternative that we could look at in order to try and address these issues. Certainly at the staff level, we would be open at looking at any service-based formula that would actually provide a correlation between the services being provided to the community and the cost of that service that's being borne by that community. We do believe, though, that the largest basis for the department is really going to be the cost of providing the services, which is two stations in each jurisdiction. And so we think that the base for the entire cost should be borne on an equal basis, perhaps with an adjustment for service provisions that might be borne disproportionately in one entity vis-à-vis the other. We believe that there are various, you know, good reasons for having these discussions. We certainly don't want to be in a position that, that one side or the other feels the need to trigger dissolution because the other party is not willing to discuss options. We think that the resolutions that are before you tonight, in their current form, provide us with that opportunity to have those discussions while carrying forward with the operations of the department, and at minimum, providing for a more reasonable timeframe by which to provide alternative service or to seek alternative service if for some reason we're not able to come to resolution of these matters with the Belmont Fire Protection District. Having said all of the above, and in consideration Having said all of the above, and in consideration of the direction that has been given to the staff within the Belmont Fire Protection District, I should mention that their board, as we understand it, have not adopted a resolution amending the JPA as we speak. They've given direction to their staff, and their staff is working on a resolution that would extend the timeframe for six months to trigger the expedited dissolution with a fixed date of twelve-thirty-one. Again, both of those points are contained within the one resolution that is before you, and we would support that resolution and that timeframe. The caveat, though, what we're suggesting with a new funding formula in effect at a fixed date is not something we would recommend to you. And in consideration of that, would put forward the second resolution here as being something that may be necessary in order to further the discussions. The second resolution is similar to the first, again, except for the fact that it gives us six months by which the trigger can be implemented, but instead of a fixed date of twelve-thirty-one, the moment that that notice is given would allow for a six-month termination. And therefore, if in January the termination were, or the notice were given, July would be the termination date. If February were the date, August would be the date. What we would suggest to you, and we've talked to special legal counsel, we think that the authority can be extended to the mayor in this fashion, is that if the council so chose to give the mayor the option of approving either of these two resolutions to make amendments to the JPA under either scenario, the preferred being with the December thirty-first hard date, the fixed date for dissolution if we're not able to come to agreement, but if need be, falling back to the six-month notice, if that is acceptable or necessary for the City of Belmont to continue these discussions, then that would be an option as well. So if you, you know, our recommendation is that you would grant the mayor the authority to enact either of the two resolutions, the December thirty-first being, with the fixed date being the preference with the other as a fallback proviso. In addition to that, however, we're recommending to you that you grant the city manager authorization or his designee to send notice of the city's withdrawal from the withdrawal and dissolution of the JPA as of June thirtieth, two thousand and seven, only in response to an equivalent letter to the City of San Carlos by the Belmont Fire Protection District prior to December thirty-first. And that authority, if granted, would simply allow staff to respond to a letter and give the city equal footing on any dissolution procedures with Belmont if Belmont initiated that action. Again, the City of San Carlos chose not to submit such a letter. We're just suggesting that it might be best, and prudent for the city council, to be in a position to respond by granting that authority to the city manager or to city staff in response to a letter if such were submitted to it by the City of Belmont or the Belmont Fire Protection District. That really concludes my report. Staff is looking to the city council for direction, and we're certainly prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I had a quick question, Mr. Weiss. You know, the last part that you mentioned about authorization to send the letter, if we don't send the letter, could you, I don't understand quite why we have to send a letter.
At some point, we're going to call upon the attorneys to explain all the nuances of this. The thought is, is that either entity can initiate the termination. And there really is a debate as to whether or not it's necessary to follow that up. The one thought, and what we did, what we, the City of San Carlos, did the last time, was to submit a letter at the same time or following, having received the letter from the City of Belmont. And the reason for that, as I understand it, was to ensure that both parties were on equal footing, and that neither party could then take the position that, well, we've given you the letter initiating these procedures, but we've decided unilaterally to withdraw that letter that we've given. The thought was, is that, well, neither side would be able, or be in a position then to discontinue the proceedings without having the other side in full agreement. And so it was just determined that it would give you an additional level of protection and eliminate the potential for any argument that one side might have, that if they unilaterally submitted a letter initiating the proceedings, that they unilaterally could withdraw that letter and send us off on a series of different actions and reactions that might not be necessary. So with that, I mean, if the city attorney would want to...
Councilmember Grisilli, do you need more?
Well, I just, it just, I don't understand why you have to...
Because one party, having given the notice, the second thing that triggers the event happening is June thirty, two thousand and seven. So before you get to June thirty, two thousand and seven, the party who gave the notice can unilaterally withdraw the notice. It's not a mutually agreed date. It's a date given by unilateral notice. So you can unilaterally withdraw it, and the only way you could prevent that is to contest it on the basis that you'd taken steps to, that were irrevocable, and it would be a hardship, and they would be stopped from asserting the unilateral rescission.
Why would that be a bad thing? If they withdrew the letter of dissolution?
Well, suppose in reliance...
I don't mean to put you on the, I'm just trying to argue...
Suppose in reliance, on the notice, you went out and you entered into a contract with another entity to provide service, or you took steps yourself to have your own fire department, and then all of a sudden, on June first or June fifteenth, that notice is unilaterally withdrawn. That's the whole basis of being on an equal footing. It means, effectively also, that you're going to have to have mutual agreement to go forward after June thirty, two thousand and seven. Thank you.
Commissioner Grocott?
Yes?
Any comment on the proposal?
Sure, I'm ready to make a motion, if you like.
Well, let's not quite do that yet.
Yeah, I just, I had a, just so that we're clear on this, what we're talking about tonight is simply authorizing the mayor, depending on what the City of Belmont does as the Belmont Fire Protection District, with respect to this termination date, just extending it from the end of this year to June thirtieth and/or December thirty-first, depending on what the Belmont Fire Protection chooses to do with respect to the extension. And what that does is that buys us some additional time to either try to come to some sort of agreement, in which case we create a revised JPA that may include some of the language that they're talking about, although we're not really discussing whether or not we're in agreement with their proposed, where we, the City of San Carlos, would pay more than they would. That's not on the table this evening, correct?
That's not on the table with our resolutions. It may be on the table for the Belmont Fire Protection District.
I'm just talking about us.
Correct. You are right.
Because if we were talking about that, I think this would be a lot longer discussion. And then the second thing is that I don't have an issue, and I completely understand about the need, that if we indeed receive a letter, we should give one back, because then if indeed we continue to work together and come to a resolution, then we can mutually agree to withdraw our letters, in which case we're both back on the same footing, exactly. Yeah, instead of it being, that it doesn't look like it's going anywhere, and so, you know, in good faith, we've looked for alternative fire protection services, and then we get to, you know, the eleventh hour, the twenty-third hour, whatever you want to call it, and Belmont Fire Protection District may not have a viable alternative, in which case they say, no, wait a second, we've changed our mind. So I think it, just from the standpoint of putting us on equal footage in terms of the, hopefully, continued discussions towards keeping South County Fire, whatever we're calling it these days, the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department together, I think it does make sense for us to authorize the city manager and/or his designee as staff to go ahead and to issue a response to that. And then, I guess my question really has to do with sort of what next? I mean, is the board, Fire Board, going to continue to need to try to hammer this out with the Belmont Fire Protection District?
Let's, yeah, let's give it to Councilmember...
Oh, I'm sorry, I was still just asking a question about what's next, should this go forward, as part of my questions, but...
We'll get to that in a moment.
Oh, okay, then I'll...
I was just, thought we'd take, I don't have any more questions for staff. I'm interested to hear council discussion, so I just thought we'd get a public comment and then have councils.
Let's handle public comment, Pat Bell.
Thank you, Pat Bell, San Carlos. I think it's a fairy tale to think that there's going to be any discussion or any working together or anything if San Carlos City Council ignores the fact that Belmont refuses to do anything more unless San Carlos agrees to pay fifty-three percent for the period July one to December thirty-first, two thousand and seven. They aren't going to do that. They have said they're not going to do that. They're finished, they're out of here, we're on our own, we have six months to find fire service. Mr. Weiss has said that that is going to be tough, if not impossible. We've left ourselves in this situation because we all said the assessment has to pass. Well, it didn't pass. We have no other options on the table. We can go back to CDF in San Mateo and see how much they're going to charge us. We have no idea how much they're going to charge us. Whatever it is, whatever it was last time, it didn't include the unfunded liabilities. So that was a fairy tale to some extent as well. It seems to me that that six months, fifty-three percent for that six months, is going to cost us probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what it's going to cost to buy this time. If you don't do that, you don't get that time, you don't talk to Belmont, it's over, and you better get out there right now and hope that you can find fire service for the second half of two thousand and seven for less money, but you have no way of knowing what it's going to cost. This is a hundred and fifty grand, that's what it costs. And by increasing fees for plan check and inspection, you can recoup that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you raise those fees in Jan, well, February, probably can't get it done in January, raise them in February, you're collecting that money February through June, you're also collecting it July through December, and that would offset a good portion of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if not all of it. And then you have time to talk to Belmont. Then you have time to do this in a thoughtful manner, not an emotional manner, not because of what people have said about each others and about each other's cities, and we can get on with whether or not this can happen. If you choose not to do that, and you choose to say, well, the heck with Belmont, they're just being unreasonable, so we're not going to play their game, then you're really, really in a bind. You have six months to go out and shop, and the guys who are selling the goods to you know that you don't have any other options. So why in the world would they give you a bargain? And are they going to drop everything and write up proposals and work with you to make this happen in six months because you got yourself in this corner? I don't know, maybe they are. Maybe they're just such kind-hearted people that they'll do that, but you don't know that. And I think, Mr. Weiss said the fifty-three forty-seven has been the point of contention. Well, it hasn't been the point of contention for the past six months. We agreed to that, we got that out of the way, it was done, nobody was really happy with it, but it was a compromise, and it got the job done. Now, we're treated to a dissertation about why we shouldn't have done that, why it's a bad idea, why we're getting ripped off, and so we should just dig in our heels now and not play that game. Well, I think we've got to play it for six months, or we're going to be in real trouble here. I mean, we're up against it. We don't have any money to repair the fire trucks, we don't have any money to pay off the lawsuits, we don't have any money to do anything, but, you know, we're going to have to dig down and find a hundred and fifty grand so that we aren't out there with a volunteer fire department, because these guys have darn near volunteered for the past two years. I don't expect them to do it on a totally voluntary basis, and we don't have a trained volunteer fire department, so, you know, it's down to the nitty-gritty now. I implore you to give us time to do this thoughtfully and do it right, and not just thumb our noses at Belmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And next is Gail Coz.
Hi, Gail Coz, I've lived here for six years. Sat here many nights listening to council debate this and the seriousness of it, but I just want to weigh in on what I thought of the campaign to pass the assessment. I thought it was very half-hearted. The mailings we received were not informational, they didn't provide. If I hadn't been already going to vote for the assessment, they would not have persuaded me to do so. So I was really disappointed in how seriously council did not take the campaign to pass the assessment, and I agree with the rest of the things that Pat said. I hope you'll tackle it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Let's turn back to Councilmember Doherty's question regarding what's next.
Well, I mean, it was just really more of an understanding of, I guess, in part, understanding of what the timeline was going to be if indeed, because it seems at this point it's a bit of the tail wagging the dog. It seems like Belmont has clearly identified what their terms are to continue to move this, or to keep, to stay in the JPA. I think that we all recognize that trying to dissolve the JPA as of June and try to find fire protection is probably unrealistic, Belmont as well. So I would like to hear actually from our board members as to what their sense is in terms of Belmont, because it seems to me that Belmont's taking a pretty hard position in terms of what their terms are to continue this relationship since the assessment failed. And I would be just interested in hearing their perspective.
Go first.
Well, Councilwoman Doherty, I mean, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night at, is it six-thirty or seven o'clock? Six-thirty. I plan on showing up, and hopefully, there will be three other board members there, and I'm sure Councilman Grocott's going to be there. You know, I guess, it's Yogi Bear, it's not over till it's over. I'm going to go in, and we're going to talk, and if, you know, four people can't agree, then we're not going to agree. But I refuse to, personally, and no criticism of Ms. Bell, and she has her opinion, and I have mine, I think we have to just keep working at it. I mean, we've put in a good, solid year, Councilman Grocott and I, so has Belmont, and I think that we owe it to keep talking until people won't talk anymore. And that's my opinion. Now, maybe I'm wrong, and maybe I'm just whistling, you know, in the graveyard, but I don't, I'm not going to give up, and I'm not going to say it's over until people just will not talk anymore. So, I mean, I know, maybe that sounds naive, but I just, I want to go in, and I want to see what we can work on. We're not talking about any kind of formula tonight, but what we work on to see if we can come to some common ground. I think your point's well-taken. In six months, I don't know how either city could feel that they could get adequate fire service. I'm certainly going to bring that up on Wednesday, and other issues, and hopefully, we can come to some agreement. But that's just my personal take on it. Councilman Grocott may have a different spin on it.
Well, I think, before I answer your question, there were some things in this report that I think might skew one's thinking, and I want to straighten it out. And that is on the first page. It says Belmont representatives suggest that the City of San Carlos should match Belmont's revenue availability to the department plus pick up the additional three percent formula adjustment. And I can understand why that might have been the perception, having sat at the meeting and staff was there. I did call Mr. Warden and ask him about this, since I can only call one person, and I wanted to get their perspective on it. And that's not their, that's not the position they're holding. For one thing, they would like, from their revenue stream, which is their district monies, to not use all of it so that they can have a reserve, build up a reserve... to not use all of it so that they can have a reserve, build up a reserve over time. So there's no intention to, you know, say, "Hey, we've raised 6.2 this year, here it is, you guys have to pay 6.2." They're not saying that. So I just wanted to straighten that out. And that changes these numbers quite a bit when you look at it that way. I think where we go from here is, much as Bob—much like what Bob said, we've got, you know, meeting Wednesday night coming up. And I also think just the idea of allowing Belmont to hire on a permanent city manager, which they haven't had in a long time, and Jack Crist will be coming on board. Jack was an interim city manager with Belmont when we were negotiating much of what we did prior to the campaign. So he's very knowledgeable about the fire department and all the issues. I would like to see him on board. And what I'm hoping for, quite frankly, is—and it's what I asked for when we met for the first time as a fire board after the campaign was over, and that is to allow opportunity for the chief—which—the way the JPA is set up now, the chief runs his fire department, and he consults with city managers from the two cities, and he works with his staff, which is the finance director, Thomas Phil, and so forth. And I would like to give the chief the opportunity to sit down with everybody at the table and address this issue of funding formula. Not regardless of what Belmont says, Belmont has given their position, and that's fine. But I think if you look at the language of the JPA agreement and the way it was written and the way the funding formula was tied to the passage or failure of the assessment, what that says to me is that there is no funding formula. I mean, there is, because we negotiated it, we talked about it, we all made—we made a 5-0 decision on the funding formula and made comments that evening about how we liked it and we thought it worked and the justification for it and so forth. But what I'm saying is because the funding formula language was tied to the passage of the assessment, technically, legally, it's null and void. So what we need is—we need recommendation from the chief, I believe, on what that funding formula should be. Now, the question, should there be a funding formula? Yes. If you look at Livermore Pleasanton, they have a funding formula. If you look at North County Fire, which is—I think Millbrae and Chief helped me out—Daly City, you look at their agreement, funding formula, the day of having a 50-50 agreement, it doesn't work. And there was a reason we put that in there, so that in the future, one city grows more than the other or whatever, you can have some accountability. But again, my bottom-line hope is we get a little bit away from the frustration everyone's feeling about the loss of the assessment, we get Jack Crist on board over in Belmont, and give a little time, and hopefully we can sit down and talk. That's what I'm hoping for.
I mean, I applaud, and I'm thankful that I have two councilmembers that are willing to sort of keep working at this. However, I just—I can't help but sort of think that this isn't a serial type of decision-making process and that it's almost time for us to branch off and start to parallel track, which is, in good faith, we continue to work with Belmont through the board to try to come to consensus. Because I do believe that there are efficiencies that are gained by keeping the department together, by keeping Belmont and San Carlos served under one agency. But at the same time, we would be remiss as a council, I think, if we didn't have Plan B. And I feel like for the last year, I've been saying, "What's Plan B? What is—what's our fallback position if the assessment doesn't pass? What do we do if these negotiations don't work out?" And so I would like to very strongly encourage my council to not only look at this, but also to authorize staff to reopen those discussions with CDF, with San Mateo, with Redwood City, with the other agencies, to understand level of interest and understand if they're willing to sort of stand by the pricing and stand by the proposals that were already submitted, just so that we would have, again, a Plan B. Again, not saying that I'm predisposed to not, you know, thinking that this may work out with Belmont or with the Belmont Fire Protection District, but just simply that I don't believe that we should be in a position six months from now where we're in exactly the same position we are tonight, which is, well, maybe if we keep talking, something will happen. And/or we get sort of painted into a corner where it may not be such a good deal for San Carlos, but we're doing it out of desperation because that's the only alternative. So while I would like to, again, you know, ask our fire board members to continue to negotiate on our behalf in good faith with Belmont to try to come up with what makes the most sense for both cities, I would, at the same time, like to suggest as a council that we do authorize our city staff to allow them to go back out to the agencies and request either that they reaffirm the pricing and the proposals that were submitted before or that we ask them to tell us where prices may have changed. It may be—it may have gone up, it may have gone down, they may have more information. But I don't want to see us in a position, like Ms. Bell said, where out of desperation we're paying higher prices because we don't have any other alternatives. And I think we would be remiss if we didn't, so.
Through the chair, I can't disagree with your comments. But we do have a meeting on Wednesday night. I mean, on Thursday morning, I might be standing right with you, and I may not be, depending on what happens. Through the chair, would we even be able this evening to give staff authorization to go out and do anything like that, or would that have to be agendized?
It's not on your agenda tonight.
Right. I didn't mean to, you know, throw parliamentary prestige at you.
No, absolutely. So then, I guess my question would be then, based on the outcome of Wednesday's meeting, then perhaps—and this is just putting it out there, you know, maybe we ought to consider having a special meeting if indeed that's—the—if it doesn't go the way that you expected to or if something happens. Because I would—I would hate for us to wait until our next meeting, which is going to be in January, for us to get to this point when, you know, I don't—I'm just looking for staff to go out and to make some inquiries of the agencies. I'm not asking them to do anything.
No, I understand that. I'm just—and I didn't mean to be parliamentary about it, I just—
Understood, understood.
Okay. I would concur that—I'm sorry, through the—go ahead, Ms. Joyce.
Through the chair, I mean, I think it—it's only prudent that we—it's not on the agenda for discussion, and that's, I think, why council was giving the advice. It's—in terms of you giving direction to staff, it's not on the agenda for discussion. But I think it's fair for me to suggest to you that staff is preparing to do that very thing out of the—you know, as a prudent step to just determine what our alternatives might be. So we plan on doing that very thing, just on our own discretionary authority.
And again, I'm not agreeing with any of that. I'm just—I'm—we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night, and I want to preclude that meeting with decisions or—even, well, sentiment in my mind of going out and doing X when I haven't had a chance to do Y yet. And I concur with you about having a special meeting. I know the week of the 25th through the 31st, City Hall is closed, so it would probably have to be sometime next week if we had to have a special meeting. Or—I can't remember when the 31st—I apologize when—
I think it'd have to be probably next week.
Whatever. But I'm not disagreeing with you on that point either.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In respect to Councilmember Dougherty's questions, might we hear from the chief? I think he might have a few things to say about that.
Chief Fry, would you like to respond to that?
May be Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Currently, the—we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night, and this is a topic of discussion. I think it'll be relevant for us to be moving forward. I think that we need to have the opportunity to do these things as a department and, as Mr. Grocott mentioned, wait until the new city manager gets into Belmont next year and allow us some time to try and work through some of these issues. And spend the time that we need to discussing other avenues and other possible funding mechanisms for—the fire department, to help us to continue through and move on. I'm not sure what some of those would be at this point, but I think there's enough people within the organization and within the staffs of both councils and cities that we can—we can work through and find what we need to do in regards to that. Certainly, the funding, the inspection fee that was discussed earlier is something to talk about. Plan check fees, those types of things which are coming in now could be readdressed. False alarm fees. There's many different ways—grants. We're currently—actually, Wednesday night, we'll be accepting a grant for $18,200 from Fireman's Fund for some equipment. So the fire department is actively looking and, you know, checking for ways that we can get some additional funding into—the department to help offset some of the costs, however we can do that, through programs or anything else that we have in place.
Mr.—
With all due respect, I mean, I wouldn't hang my hat on a new city manager in Belmont. They've had a new city manager every six to nine months a year, for as long as I can remember. So I hope that, you know, maybe this one will actually stick around or be allowed to stick around. But I think we really ought to look out for San Carlos, in the interests of San Carlos, and not necessarily worry about what Belmont's going to do and hope that they're going to be able to get their city manager administrative position stabilized.
I agree, and I hear what you're saying, but as Mr. Grocott said earlier, he does have a lot of history over the last 12 months of dealing with getting us at least to the point that we are today, you know, through the—through last July and into the early, you know, early part of the fall. But, you know, your point's well taken, I understand it.
If I might—
Okay. Looks like we're moving toward a resolution. Go ahead, Matt.
Well, I also was hoping that the chief would speak to—you've made some contact with San Mateo and with CDF?
I've just had a brief discussion with them, and I do know that the CDF cost has increased a little bit in regards to now that they pay a portion of the retirement, the employee contribution of the retirement. And I do know that San Mateo City Fire has just signed a three-year contract with some increases that are in there. So certainly, there will—there probably will be coming back at a different number. But that, again, I think—if it's the direction that we want to move, I think prior was based on just two companies in each city, and you need to be—we need to be probably thinking more long-term in regards to fire prevention services. I don't think that was included the last time around. And any other management services that you may want to have here in the authority, plus some of the maintenance fees and some of the other things that are going on. You know, as time has marched on, the fleet has gotten a little bit older, and even this week, as of this morning, I have three pieces that are in the shop and one looking for a transmission, I think. So these types of things occur regularly, and we're—we're doing every avenue to keep things moving in the right direction and have the equipment that we need to have here to protect both cities, so.
Mr. Councilmember Lewis, Vice Mayor Lewis?
Well, thank you. I don't have any direct questions for you. To me, one of the big issues here, and this isn't necessarily news, but we're in a very unstable situation. We need to move towards stability for our fire service for San Carlos and just for—also for our stability for firefighters. They've certainly come to the mat with some—in negotiations to sort of help us with some of the different labor agreement things. And it's a lot for us to continue to ask of the firefighters to keep just waiting for us all to sort of do the right thing or come up with a stable situation. I do—I have a couple of questions for you—for both of the commissioners before you guys go to the fire meeting. But I think we have to look at the failed assessment as a referendum on the funding formula that we put in front of the voters. I don't think there's any other way to look at that. And so I know that evidently—I'm interested to hear your guys' feedback on if it's—if there's been a gauntlet put down, there's 5347 or nothing. I'm just sort of curious about—I'm pleased to see that both of you are saying, "Hey, look, we need to negotiate, we need to try to keep banging on this thing." But I do think, from my perspective, that we've had a referendum on the 5347, and the community doesn't support it. The community being the combination of residents and commercial industry and so forth. And I—also, we heard speak of a potential another assessment. From my standpoint, that's—not a good way to go. We've been twice now to the voters on this, and I think that we'd be remiss in trying to say, "Yeah, that's contingent upon another assessment." I think that we're—we'd be irresponsible, in my opinion, from this vantage point moving forward in that regard. The question is for me, and I just want to get some more information from—the two of you, if possible—is, so what is the objective? I mean, that you would—that you—we're going into this next fire meeting, and I haven't—I guess I'm curious also to—if you guys are inclined at all to speak to it, is how you feel about this—this current 5347 that's sort of been laid out as a mandate for us? Or whether you're saying that we're not necessarily—you know, you agree with that mandate? Or do you feel like we should—we're going to go in and open it up and see if, you know, where we can move on that, that we support that, we don't support that? I guess I'm just sort of curious as to how are we approaching this negotiation and what's the objective going into it? I completely understand this resolution saying that we need a year to—in a stable fashion—to try to move to a place where we can figure out what our next—how we're going to—whether it's Belmont-San Carlos, and we can keep that together under a new negotiation that works, fantastic. Or that we—in order to move forward with sort of some—in a responsible fashion, a timely fashion, that will need more time than six months. So I guess I would just like to, if possible, get a little bit more sense of what are the objectives of you guys going into the fire meetings?
I would disagree with you that the results of the election are a mandate on the funding formula. Now, I did say at a meeting with the chamber, with the government affairs, that I realized there was some discontent, if you will, with the funding formula by certain parties and—I think a predominant number of businesses. But if you look at the ballot results, the ballot results were positive. They're 58 percent in favor, 42 against. Certainly in residential votes, it was, again, in favor. It was the commercial vote that voted against it. And like I said earlier, the funding formula—the need for a funding formula is there. So that's what we'll—that's what I intend to discuss. Now, the factors that go into it, I suppose there could be some question about that. I feel a little bit at an odd position because certainly lately, you know, turned to Belmont, and there does seem to be a pretty adamant position. It's—and it's not the 5347, mind you, that's just a number that comes out of a formula. It's sticking to the formula that was negotiated and what went into the formula, those factors. The—I think you can look at other factors. And the reason I feel in an odd position is because when I turn back to our staff and I say, "Well, okay, I guess there's some things we could look at," I talk to the chief about it, and he nods his head and says, "Yeah, that's reasonable." I go to our own city staff, and they say, "It's unreasonable." And an example of that, we have Station 13 sitting out there, it's got three garage doors, has three pieces of equipment, a truck, a hazmat truck, and an engine. Potentially, all three pieces of equipment could come rolling out of that station if it were manned to do so. That means quicker response times in San Carlos, it means more equipment in San Carlos. And the pushback I get from staff is, "Well, then we should have a choice whether we have that or not, and do we want to pay for it? And perhaps, since we have it, we should charge Belmont for it and make them pay." Puts me in a really odd position as a member of the fire board to go and make an argument like that. That's really difficult. So you get it coming and going. Personally, I don't care a whit about the numbers when I'm a—when I'm sitting on the fire board, because what I care about are the factors. And then I can go to the community and say, "Here are the factors, they make sense, and the numbers are what they are." Now, I care about them— Now, I care about them as a council member because I know what our budget is. And I do have concerns about what we can and cannot pay for. But all I care about with the funding formula is that the factors that go into it seem fair, are justifiable, and that I can go to the community and say, well, these are the reasons they're in there. Now, I thought that's what we had with the, with the old one. And that didn't just, that didn't come from Bob and I, it didn't come from Coral Lynn and Dave. It came from a consultant that was hired by, and paid for by Belmont to look into what might you put into a funding formula. It came from looking at other departments around the state that have funding formulas, and what do they do? Um, now, where argument came against it is when we went out for the assessment, and with the assessment, you don't look at things like that. With the, with an assessment, the, uh, for instance, assessed valuation of property, the only way that comes into the funding, the, uh, assessment process that the company we hired to, the engineer to put together the assessment, the only reason assessed value of property comes in is when you look at assessed value of property that was lost in a fire. And that's how it comes into play. Um, so that was the argument used against the funding formula we came up with, was that when we hired, uh, which was it, Doug? Mazeness? No, um-
Mark.
Muni. Muni Financial. Uh, and they did their engineering report. They don't look at population, they don't look at assessed value. What they look at is how much did you use the fire department? Or how much loss did you have? You know, call volume and so forth, that sort of thing. Fine, so maybe there's an argument to look at that, if we're going to look at a funding formula. Maybe there's an argument to look at the three garage door station with certain equipment in there and better, better response times. I'm willing to look at it.
My take on it, Councilman Lewis, is Wednesday night is going to be, um, an interesting meeting. And, and I, I expect Belmont to come and, and be participant in the meeting, as we are. And I'm hopeful to, to sit down, and we're, I don't think we're going to agree on the whole world that night, but I think we're going to have a, at the end of the evening, we'll know if we, if we are going to get off, uh, points or not off points. And if people don't want to continue to negotiate and, and talk about things, then that's going to be an answer. And we're going to have to go back and, and, as the city of, as our council, and figure out what we want to do, agreeing with Councilwoman Doorty. Uh, you know, I mean, you can only talk to people if they want to do it, and hopefully the two of us can have a good dialogue with the two folks from Belmont and, and, and keep it going. But if it doesn't happen, that, and, and Wednesday, I believe, is going to be a very important, I mean, it's, it's really the key. And, um, um, I, I can't tell you exactly how I'm going to talk or where it's going to go, because it depends on the dynamic of how the meeting's going to go. And if people just say, no, we're not changing this, it's at six-thirty-one, well, we're going to have a pretty short meeting, because it's not going to, we're not going to have any dialogue. I'm hopeful that's not going to be the case. And I'm hopeful that, uh, that we are going to have a good dialogue. But I wish I could be more specific, but maybe you have another question for me?
Um, no, I was, I was just curious if you guys were, have any opinions on the additional assessment thing that was in the, in the report, or, um, uh, the fifty-three, forty-seven specifically? But-
Specifically, I'm not tied to, sort of as Commissioner, or as Councilman Grocott said, the fifty-three, forty-seven, in my mind, was tied to the JPA assuming that the, or in the JPA assuming that the assessments passed. They didn't pass. So, as, as he said, it's basically, it's a moot point. So, you start and say, okay, now we're, we're back almost to square one, not quite, because we're way, I think, past square one, but maybe square two, and figure out what, what would be a, a situation where we could have it. It, I, I also agree that it may not be a fifty-fifty because of the fact of this, the, what usage do we have? What, what, what services do we have? Uh, what are, what's, what's involved in all this? So, I'm wide open to it. But I don't, I'm not tied to the fifty-three, forty-seven on the assessment. I, I'm probably not, um, overwhelmed to go out to the voters, again, having been rejected twice. Uh, but I want to hear, but I also said it at the same Government Affairs Council that we had with the Chamber of Commerce, that I still want to hear every possible option. And I'm not going to say no to anything until, until it, it's completely vetted and, and we have a, a good discussion on it.
May I ask a follow-on question? Actually, this is maybe Mark, you'd know better than, um, the council members. Has Belmont actually met and had a similar dialogue about this? I mean, do we know that there's actually full council support for moving this forward, or that there's not council support?
What we understand is that they've given their staff direction to prepare a resolution that would allow the additional time, established December thirty-first as being the, um, target dissolution date, but that it be tied to the funding formula being effective July first of next year.
That was the direction given to staff to prepare that. That resolution was not passed, however. It has not come before their council.
That's correct. That's correct. And I met, I met today with, uh, their city manager and, uh, and, and finance director, uh, and, and looked at, frankly, a, a draft of the resolution that is being prepared there. It's just a draft, it wasn't in final form yet, uh, that, that did that very thing. Uh, but it, it, uh, it did impose a, a funding formula effective July first and carrying forward. In effect, then putting the burden on San Carlos to determine whether or not that funding formula would be acceptable moving forward beyond that date, and, and, and putting the city of San Carlos in a position of determining whether or not it would want to file a notice of dissolution or not, as opposed to vice versa.
And has that, um, has their agenda, or has that been calendared yet for?
My understanding, it's on the agenda for tomorrow night, uh, at, at their city council meeting.
So, by Wednesday's fire board meeting, we should know what their council has decided to do?
That would be my expectation.
So, uh, anyway, I just want to say, I, I totally support you guys getting in and negotiating, and I really appreciate how persistent you guys are with this and, and trying to keep it together. It's certainly something that we've all are endeavoring to try and do. I just want to encourage you to, and I know you are, so, but, uh, the, the broad scope of stability of service and stability to our firefighters, and, and make sure that we get moving forward and, and, uh, in a positive direction.
I want to answer, uh, Councilmember Doorty's question, because I actually attended their meeting, so I saw it firsthand. And my take on it is that, um, the two members of their council that are on the fire board, actually, they were meeting as a district, so, um, but Fireblock and Warden were pretty adamant about sticking to the funding formula as developed. And again, it's because, partly because they feel like, and we did, we spent a lot of time talking about it and, and hashing it out. Um, it's also because they don't want to reopen something that they see as being a wound that we sewed up, sutured, healed, and got over. And so, whatever, that's what they said. Um, my, my take on Warren is that, uh, he's open to negotiating things. Uh, but I think he wants to see a funding formula. And my take on Phil Mathewson was, I'm not sure that he was stuck on the funding formula as it is, but what he is, what he did seem to me to be very adamant about was that we have something by, uh, the start of our next fiscal year that would be, uh, an operational funding formula. Now, I could be incorrect about my take on, on Phil, but I'm just going by what, what I heard him say. So, um, that was, that's what I saw.
No, I appreciate that, um, that feedback. I, I mean, I think as council members, we always try to stay objective until the vote actually comes up. So, you know, what may have been said in the past, they may have had other information that may change their minds. So, I would be really, um, uh, interested in finding out what their council, because again, you know, anything essentially that you two do comes back to the full council. Um, you know, we have every faith that you're negotiating in, on our behalf, and, and we've put our confidence and our trust in you to do that. But at the end of the day, it's got to come back to the full council for, um, for the vote. And so, I think that, that vote is going to be, um, pretty telling, not here necessarily in San Carlos, but I think definitely in Belmont, given, um, given how we move, you know, a lot of progress has been made, but, you know, I think we need to see where their mindset is now that the assessment hasn't passed. Because I think a lot of us, we're putting a lot of, banking a lot on that assessment passing, and now that it hasn't, uh, it, it does, in some ways, I think, reset this, not all the way to square one, but, but certainly in my mind, um, I tend to agree with Councilmember Lewis, that I think, uh, I do look at the, um, the assessment not passing as, you know, and twice, clearly, that the voters in San Carlos weren't, uh, weren't keen on the proposals put in front of them. So-
Could I? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to call a question.
Uh, I have a question to ask, just to, if the mayor would, would consider it.
I'm sorry.
I'm hearing confidence in Bob and I. I just want to make sure that it's, is there a consensus, if you will, to have a funding formula? Or as a council, are we, do we want to go back to fifty-fifty and that's it? Or are we open to negotiating a, a, a funding formula of some type? It's just the factors that are the matter, or, you know?
I don't know that we need to go there, uh, on this, on this item. I think, I think we wanted to keep to the resolution, I thought.
We're going to need direction, you're right. We, we can keep to the resolution, Councilmember Griselli, but when we go to a meeting on Wednesday, if there's going to be a meeting on Wednesday, and we're going to discuss things, uh, what direction do we take with us from this council on that issue?
Just, I would suggest, I mean, from my standpoint, have the meeting on Wednesday. You're not going to agree to anything, you're not going to commit to anything on Wednesday. I, I would imagine that it's going to be, if it's anything like the last meetings have been, it's going to be the beginning of a dialogue. And so, um, I would suggest have the beginning of that dialogue, see what the tenor is, figure out what Belmont is doing, um, or plans to do with the resolution. Um, and then, if need be, we either have a special meeting, or we come back at the first meeting in January, and we start to talk about what's transpired then and what direction I think that perhaps we should give you.
From my standpoint, I wouldn't rule out a funding formula out of hand. It depends what the components of that funding formula are. Um, you know, the, there are elements of a funding formula that I might reject, and there's elements of a funding formula that might be acceptable. But certainly, you know, we've, we've, uh, as far as assessed valuation, there was a referendum assessed valuation, in my opinion, and it's quite clear, and, and we're also been told that service levels for our population sizes are roughly similar. So, um, anyway, depends what the components are.
And I would agree. I think, I think we cannot deny the, the need for a formula. I think, uh, in a perfect world, I suppose a fifty-fifty would be wonderful. I, I don't think that's going to happen, but I do think that there's, there's a process that goes into the formula that should come back and make sense to everybody. And I don't think, just because we've been there once, a fifty-three, forty-seven is the end-all. Um, I think it's, I think it needs to be re, reworked. You know, we went into this, we, we agreed that fifty-three, forty-seven is a package deal. A package included financing. Financing didn't happen. The package, uh, the package is not delivered. Uh, we need to start again, and we're all aware of the, of the problems in funding of this large budget. So, the, the amounts, the percentages are very important. But I just happen to think that the, it's got to be a logical process and that Belmont would, is willing to sit down and, and go through it, uh, one more time. And, and I would encourage them to, to join us in doing so.
Thank you. I would make the motion that we adopt a resolution to amend, uh, to amend the amended and restated exercise of joint powers agreement for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department establishing December thirty-first, two thousand seven, as, as the date certain for dissolution if notice of withdrawal is given, from January one, two thousand seven, through, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand seven. Essentially, option two, that's forced, which I think is parallel to what, the action that Belmont took.
It is with respect to those two dates, but silent on the formula, yes.
Exactly. And that's where, yeah.
Uh, would you- Sorry. Would you also include, um, as part of your motion to authorize the city manager to submit a notice, or designate the notice, should Belmont Fire Protection District submit a letter to, of dissolution to, um, San Carlos?
No.
Okay.
Okay. We have one motion on one resolution. Mark, do you still need both of them?
I think that having the, the authority to do the second as a fallback is, is prudent. Uh, I mean, it may save you the need for having a second meeting or a, a special meeting to address the issue.
All right.
So, may I, um, have a substitute motion?
Mm-hmm.
Special legal counsel might-
I, I don't know the protocol here. It seems to me the two resolutions are before you, but perhaps you might consider combining the two resolutions. And with the notion that you are authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the JPA if the board can get there, um, which would, um, basically extend the timeframe for giving notice, um, of dissolution of the JPA, uh, to June thirtieth, two thousand and seven, uh, with the hope that there would be a designated time certain of December thirty-first, two thousand and seven. Uh, I, I think there may be some wiggle room if, um, if Belmont wants to insist on any extension without a funding formula would require, uh, just a simple six-month notice. Uh, you know, what we're looking for here is, is just authorization to amend, to give us more time to talk, and-
Well, the other thing, though, we're looking at is item three, Ms. Casman, the Casman, that authorizes the city manager to write a letter. And there's a-
Yes, we are. And you don't have a resolution before you on that, and I, and I-
Well, I know we don't. We, there may be one in a minute, in a second.
Correct, correct. That's, that's a third element. I, I was just speaking here to the amendment, uh, the proposed amendment of the JPA, of the amended JPA.
So, Ms. Casman, your recommendation is, is that we actually basically take options one and two and authorize the mayor to, um, essentially decide which resolution makes the most sense based on the outcome of Wednesday's meeting?
Correct.
Uh, the mayor's a maker of the motion-
All right. One, are you allowed to? One resolution which would give the mayor?
Just as long as you're effectively enacting both resolutions with the idea that one will go into effect, that matches up with the action taken on Wednesday night.
Would you agree to, I made your motion, uh, to that extent?
Uh, no, I'll allow someone else to make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second for Matt's motion?
Else on the table.
Here, in no second, uh, it dies, we have another motion.
I guess I'll make a stab at this. I would recommend, or I'd move that we adopt, um, that we adopt, um, either a resolution, um, as to amend the amended and restated exercise of joint powers agreement by extending the deadline for six months of dissolution through, uh, from December thirty-first, two thousand six, to June thir- thirtieth, two thousand seven. Or the resolution, um, to amend the amended and restated exercise of joint powers agreement for the Belmont-San Carlos Department establishing December thirty-first, two thousand seven, as the date certain for dissolution if notice of withdrawal is given, from January first, two thousand seven, through June thirtieth, two thousand seven. Um, and, uh, and that would be based on, um, the mayor's determination, uh, pending the outcome of the, tomorrow night's, uh, fire board meeting, sorry, Wednesday's fire board meeting. Um, and that in addition to that, I would also recommend, or I'd also move that we authorize the city manager as designee to submit a notice letter to the city, of the city's withdrawal from and the dissolution of the JPA as of June thirtieth, two thousand seven, in response to any equivalent letter submitted by San Carlos, or to San Carlos by the Belmont Fire Protection District prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and six.
Okay. We have three items on this motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any question on the motion?
Uh, I just had a comment. I, I tend to agree with your fir-, the first part of your motion, Councilwoman Teaguele Doorty wanting to, and allowing the mayor to, to choose. I, I just, I just have difficulty with the third one. Maybe it's just a, a symbolic thing. I just, I just, I can't, maybe I'll, I would, Thursday I would vote for this, but I, I can't do it today. I can't vote for, for that third part of the authorize the city manager to send the letter. I just, I just can't do that.
So, let me, let me just explain really why I feel that it's, it's important. One, from the standpoint of putting us on equal footing from a negotiation standpoint.
I heard that, and I-
And also with the intent that should, um, God forbid that this occurs, that then we both, both the Belmont Fire Protection District and the city of San Carlos then would mutually agree to withdraw should a resolution, you know, a good resolution be found.
I, I respect, I respect your point. I just, it's more of a symbolic thing, and like I said, Thursday I might agree with you and vote with it, but today I can't because I don't want to, I'm not, I'm not writing letters, I'm not giving, I'm not, I'm just, I'm sorry, maybe I'm-
That's okay.
You know, being stupid about it, but I'm not, just not going to vote for it, because I just don't, just want to keep working through Wednesday night.
So, then, let me do this. Let me amend-
But that's fine, I don't mean to interrupt you.
So, that's the point of contention. Let me amend my motion- Let me amend my motion to be, let's take them separately, I think, just one and two together with the mayor's determination.
Okay.
Will you amend your second?
I amend the second to strike the item three.
Correct.
Okay, so now we have the two resolutions.
Roll call.
Councilmember Teague-Doery?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Understand this, yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
And then, I'd like to further move that we authorize the city manager as designee to submit a notice letter of the city's withdrawal from and the dissolution of the JPA as of June 30, 2007, in response to any equivalent letter submitted to St. Carlos by the Belmont Fire Protection District prior to December 31, 2006.
Before this is seconded, just let me comment, if we do not do this, and if Belmont chooses to do it, we will have to have a separate meeting prior to the end of the year to equalize the process.
So, we would have to have that special meeting, and, and, but, I'm sorry?
To authorize the law.
Right, right. But, so, but, both commissioners would prefer that course of action, have a special meeting, rather than to put this forward at this point in time?
Well, again, I, as I said, I would like to see what happens on Wednesday. We may have to, I mean, we may be encouraged to have a special meeting anyway, depending on what happens on Wednesday. That's, that's where, that's where I'm coming from. And so, I'm, I'm just out of hand, I just feel like, and I, and again, I don't mean to drag people into a meeting during the holiday season, it's not my intent to do that, but having said so, I just, I just can't, I can't vote for that yet. I'm sorry.
But, I mean, at this point, from my standpoint, I just, I want to support the commissioners, and I'd be willing to meet again, so.
Is there a second, then, for Councilmember Doery's motion? Here, none, the motion dies. And y'all stay tuned.
Through the chair, could I request a five-minute recess, please?
You may.
Thank you.
9:15, we're back in business.
...that you've undertaken as an agency since inception. And that is summarized in the, uh, in the staff report that's included with your handout. In the absence of that, we thought we would instead sent, spent, uh, excuse me, frame the context of what we're here for this evening. And that is to deal with the five-year implementation plan. As we stated back in November, this plan sets forth a guide for how the redevelopment agency will invest tax increment revenue, both housing funds and non-housing funds, for the next five years. It sets forth the projects and programs that would be undertaken by this agency. And perhaps most importantly, um, this five-year plan is a document that can be amended at any time by this agency as additional projects and programs are identified or those that may not be no longer applicable are deemed to be eliminated. In putting this plan together, we basically looked at what occurred in the past five years for the agency, took that input plus staff's guidance and formulated that in what is before you. Since the agency should have adopted this back in 2004 and was delayed until at this point in time, the thought in addition to bringing this forward was the fact that since you're undertaking the economic development strategic planning effort that will identify projects and programs, both in the economic development field and the housing field, that this agency might fund through tax increment revenue, we brought it forward at the last meeting as an idea to adopt it in its current form and then bring it back for further amendment. In addition, um, under the redevelopment law, implementation plans must be reviewed every two and a half years in the five-year planning cycle. As such, if we look at the five-year timeframe starting in 2004, in July of 2007, staff will be before you again with an update of this plan and a midterm review, which would allow time for further adjustments as necessary. So with that, uh, we will make the presentation short and open it up for questions and/or comments. And certainly if there are additions that need to be made to this plan, we can make those at your pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Spivak?
Um, this is, uh, perhaps somewhat trivial, but on page nine of the report, uh, we still had the, I think last time we, I mentioned that it has a loading dock issued in there and this is now the now vacant property. Um, so I just wanted to say, is there a reason still to have the loading dock language in here?
Um, let me explain a little bit about history of the loading dock. Um, the city has a parking lot that is behind that parcel. And in addition, we have some, uh, a unit that we bought to make part of a housing project. When we were negotiating with the Bell Market folks, uh, we talked about reconfiguring the site to include both the housing that was proposed and their facility. And they asked that as part of our project that we build them a new loading dock. That was the reference to the loading dock. I can tell you that since the Bell Market closed, that we have had contact from Mid Peninsula Housing and they would like us to resume discussions about that project. Uh, we don't have any, uh, knowledge of who's going in there next officially at this point. So we don't know whether the next tenant would want the loading dock or not if we were to move forward with the housing project. I would suggest that if it would make the council more comfortable, you could certainly remove that, uh, reference, but you should be aware that, uh, that might pop up again.
Yeah, I was just trying to make it current to our.
Sure. I think that would be fine.
That's all.
Yeah, I just, um, would point out, this is supposed to be from 2005 through 2009. And though we're approving it here in 2006, we know more today than we did in 2005. I don't know that I share the same issue, especially if it's going to be coming before us in 2000, well, literally within six months to actually revise. And at that point, I think, um, we should know a lot more about a lot of these things.
Well, that's correct, Councilmember Doherty. And I also should point out that in the current version of the staff report, uh, we did add a paragraph at the end, which suggested that staff would suggest that if the council's comfortable adopting the five-year plan tonight to bring us in compliance, we would recommend coming back to you in a relatively short time with a study session about all of the projects in this document. Cause I think we heard loud and clear at the last council meeting that both for the benefit of the newer council members who would like a more detailed discussion of redevelopment in general, and also the full council to go through all the proj- projects that we thought that that should be done as a separate meeting. So that is also part of our recommendation to you tonight.
Other questions?
No.
All right, a motion?
Well, is it through the chair, is this a public hearing that we need to close?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Or maybe public needs to speak, excuse me.
Yeah. This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to address us on this issue?
I would, uh, move that we close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do we have a motion?
I would, uh, move resolution number.
RDA 142.
RDA 142, um, adopting the five-year implementation plan and ten-year housing compliance plan for San Carlos Redevelopment Agency project area.
Second?
Brokaw?
Director Teague, Doherty?
Yes.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Lewis?
Yes.
Chair Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, now that we've taken the vote, if we, if I might, I would just like to comment. I think the advantage to holding off on this, if nothing else, is the paragraph that Mr. Mora referenced that was added, that this would come back to us where we can take a good look at these projects. Uh, because I, the, the project that Brad, uh, Mr. Lewis brought up with the loading dock, to me, I'd just like to see the whole thing taken out of there altogether, so.
There's a couple of them like that in here.
We'll have a chance to.
That's right.
We'll have a chance to address those issues.
Thanks really.
We'll try to do that fairly soon in the new year so that we can be moving ahead with a.
Very good. Thank you.
With a good document. All right, well, I believe we're up to, um, item 10A, which is a report on traffic and pedestrian safety efforts. Mr. Montari?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this report basically gives you some, uh, background of the traffic calming, uh, projects and the efforts by city staff, traffic transportation commission. And, uh, you have a copy of the, uh, online survey. And with your approval, this survey will go online this week and we plan to have it online till the end of January. Uh, the end of January, of course, we collect all the results and tabulate it and, uh, will prepare a report that will come back to city council. And I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
So Parvise regarding the survey, I gather there's these pictures and you, uh, you click on the, on the pedestrian safety problem button or.
Right, they can click on any one of those squares and they'll go to that.
And was there some way this would be publicized to the community so they're aware that they can have input on this?
Yeah, on the first page of the website of the city. And then the, all of it is in the public works, so there's a reference from there to the public works, uh, site.
Okay. So it's an easy process when they get there. They'd be on the front, there's a, uh, an item to click on, on the front, and it goes directly to the, um, the survey form.
Yes.
Okay.
Parvise? Yeah, I just had a question. Are we, um, differentiating the survey at all by, uh, either neighborhood or by location within geographical location within the city?
The staff will do that after we collect.
So that is part of.
The survey is citywide.
So as part of the survey, you're asking a question that essentially says either where do you reside or what area are you talking about? Like, um, are you, you know, talking about, or do you reside around the downtown area, downtown corridor, or are you up in the hills? Because I know that, um, just based on past inquiries around traffic and speeding and, uh, pedestrian safety and things like that, there seem to be hotspots that vary depending on what area you're in. So I know in the Laurel and Neighborhood, for example, um, there's been, um, several meetings around, uh, the, the speeding and wanting to put in, you know, stop signs and things like that. So they may have a, a different perspective than, um, and I'm pulling the name, you know, something out of the hat, someone like up by, uh, Highlands Park, for example. So are we collecting any of that information as part of the survey in terms of geographical area around the respondents, um, where they're responding from?
Not from the respondents, because this is general. For example, as you said, someone living close to Highlands Park may comment on San Carlos Avenue or on Laurel Street, or any of those. But is there anywhere, anybody knows who thinks of the problem to report, we're not asking them where they live?
So it's, it's not really a survey then, in the true sense. It's really more of if you happen to notice something, then you can go there one time or 50 times, depending on where you think that these, uh, not safe pedestrian areas are.
Correct.
So, I'm sorry, just in, is this intended to be the survey?
Yes.
I'm sorry, cause this was a quiz.
No, no, there is, there is a survey attached. I hope you have it.
What question you doing?
No, we don't have it.
We don't have a survey. I mean, we have a pedestrian, uh, US Safe Walker quiz and the answers, thank God. Um, and then we have the vehicle code and then we have this sort of, uh, you know, these little icons, these four little icons, but we don't have a survey.
Okay, sorry, what, I don't know what has happened that the hard copy didn't go to you. Uh, yes, there is, there is a survey, I'm sorry, I have, I can go find the copy and bring it to you. The survey is, we have identified what the problems could be. For example, the speeding, uh, high volume of traffic, uh, for example, lack of crosswalk, lack of sidewalks, narrow sidewalks, utility poles in the sidewalks, everything that you can think of that could be a problem. And the residents, the business owner, the respondents identify the street, exact location of the street or intersection, and then, uh, select any of the items that they think is a problem and identify all of those problems in just one square.
Right.
That they show all this problem is the survey. So this, I'm sorry, your question is.
So now you understand why I was.
You haven't seen it, right.
No, no offense to your description, but I'd really love, I mean, I think we should do a survey. I think it sounds like a great idea in principle, but I'd love to see it and maybe have a chance for us to comment on it, uh, to make sure that it sort of satisfies some of the, what we think would be good things. So it'd be great if we could see it before we vote on it.
Sure, I'll go to my office and make some copies.
Before you go, I had another question. What's to stop Mr. Jones, who really doesn't like the speeding on San Carlos Avenue, to vote 50 times?
Uh, no, they identify the location.
Right, he's gonna say San Carlos Avenue speeding.
It was, it will be discarded because they can, uh, respond to 50 different locations.
Right.
But if they repeated the same location, that counts as one survey.
So if someone's already like, um, I've talked to Mr. Lewis here and said, hey, get online because I really don't like what's going on around Burton Park, that he, he can go on and basically if, if I've already reported that I think that the, there's not enough crosswalks around Burton Park, that he can't put in the same thing again.
Yeah, they can. It's, it's not, it can be one person, it can be 50 people reporting the same problem. We have to.
But we're not, we're not doing anything based on the numbers. So if we get 100 complaints around, uh, speeding on Melundy versus one complaint about speeding on Eaton, we're not gonna prioritize Melundy over Eaton.
No.
So it's, but it's a straightforward question. Is there any way online, in an online survey, to prevent somebody from voting more than once?
No, but, but it's okay, it's.
But he's not gonna count it. He's not gonna count it. But she just, she.
No, sorry.
No, they can't, they can't, uh, respond as many times as they want. We're trying to identify the problems regardless whether one person votes one time or 10 times or 50 people identify the same problem. All the problems that are going to be identified.
I see. So you're not, you're not counting, you're not counting.
We're not counting.
And then, um, I, I have a question on the, um, the speed hump installation policy. Cause in the, in the traffic calming devices policy, it, it says that traffic calming's not very efficient on low-volume streets, right? But on the, the, the speed hump installation policy, um, it says on item number three on page 17, by the way, of this, uh, document, is that there must be a minimum of 24-hour volume of, of traffic must be 1,200. 1,200 what?
1,200 vehicles in 24-hour period.
And is, so if it's, if it's a minimum of 1,200, is that truly low volume?
It is not really. It's not a, totally, low volume are the streets that you get 300, 400 vehicles in a 24-hour period, like cul-de-sacs or, uh, streets like that.
So it seems to me that there's a little discrepancy here. And that is, we're saying that you, you wouldn't use calming in a low-volume street, but in this case, the policy for speed humps says, well, you wouldn't use speed humps either, even though that's the best thing to use in a low-volume residential street. But it seems like our minimum standard, if you don't meet it, in other words, it's a self-defeating policy. You, you have to be low volume, it's best using lots of low volume, but you have to have high volume and actually qualify for it.
What the example here, what, what the street that qualified was Beverly Drive, 100 block of Beverly Drive. And that the volume was close to 1,500 for some, but if you go on the street, uh, say it's a towards the cul-de-sac, the volume is really low. When you look at it, really, there is no problem there. On a low, very low volume streets, speeding is hardly ever a problem when the volume is low. It's when the volume is high that you can see a lot of people speeding on the streets.
Well, I would agree with you that a cul-de-sac, it's perhaps.
Or even on, under.
Not an issue, but, um, I, I guess what I'd like to do, and if we don't want to get into this level of detail tonight, we don't have to, but I actually think that we should look at both of these policies. And, and I, I wonder whether or not our minimum threshold is too high on the speed humps. Because, um, I would respectfully disagree that I think that there's occasions when there could be 800 to 1,000 car streets, and I certainly heard this out in public, where speeding is a problem, where speed hump might be a, a decent solution.
This is a city policy and if we do that, we should, uh, reschedule it so that we can talk about it and make some changes appropriate.
Either that or actually send it back through, uh, it's traffic and transportation?
This, this is a, with the, with the survey statewide, the deciding factor on that is minimum 85% of the speed to be 30 miles per hour at least. When you go on low-volume streets, you will not find 85% of being at 30 miles per hour. It's always much lower when you're low-volume streets. So tho- those two factors go together. It's not just, just the volume, it's the speed.
I understand. And perhaps if we get into reviewing this policy, which I would like to see us do, that perhaps they're both don't, or aren't the right criteria based on what I was hearing. That's all.
Well, we have a question on, on the question there. Website is good, but not everyone goes to our website and not everyone is, is tuned in. Is it possible to distribute these surveys in some hard copy form, perhaps at city hall, senior center, maybe at the library?
Homeowners associations, perhaps?
Yeah, make them available for the broad community. We, I don't know if we want to mail it, that'd probably be ideal, but, uh, it'd be nice to have more distribution than what we would come up with on the website.
We can put them in all public places.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And a question. Um, it's kind of similar to what Brad was talking about in a way. Um, there, there's this exhibit two that shows a, uh, traffic circle.
Yes.
So as part of the, since we don't have the survey here, is part of the survey perhaps where you're able to say, based on this graphic, I think a traffic circle should go in a certain intersection?
We are not, the survey does not ask for solutions.
Oh.
Because we're asking for problem areas. We have to then determine if there are any problems and what the solutions should be. This is not about going to the people. When I bring the survey, you'll see. You're just asking, identify the problems and the location.
So we're gonna reschedule this so we can have a look at the survey?
Or do we just wanna like table this for the time being, take the next item and then come back to it? In which case, Parvise has time to go grab the survey and bring it back.
Well, through, through the chair, I'm not a fast reader. You want some water?
Got it, thank you.
I'm not a fast reader.
No.
We don't have it, whatever happened, as, as I sort of agree with, or if I don't mean to put words in Councilman Lewis's mouth and, or Councilman Grocott's, but.
Go ahead.
I think we just, if this, I'm all voting on this. I'm not approving it, I'm not accepting it. Sorry, I didn't see it.
Why don't we bring it back next meeting?
I'm sorry. I just, um, I just didn't see it.
But, but make sure you, you also.
Words exactly.
Read the other material, which historically tells you where we've gone over the last 10 or 15 years. I think it's all, it's all helpful and, and important. But again, I would suggest that we might want to have, um, a separate session to, to talk about changes in policy, or more ideally, uh, make some comments, refer them back to the Transportation and BPA committees.
Those are two separate, just whether you want to authorize the survey or not, that's an item.
I think we'd like to authorize it, except we'd like to see it and we'd like to have time to look at it.
Sure, no, I understand that. But, uh, you want the Traffic and Transportation Commission to review all the past policies and review it, that's another item that.
Yeah, I understand.
We'll be happy to do that.
We'll bring that back another time. So we will, uh, continue this until the next meeting and, um, you'll give us a packet of what will actually be distributed, distributed or hard copy available.
Sure.
Okay?
Do we want to just receive the staff report? So we don't have that piece again? And then the next one would be just the authorization to proceed with an online survey regarding pedestrian safety?
If you'd like to, um, receive the staff report, that'd be fine.
Do we need a motion to receive the staff report?
I don't think so.
I'm saying no, okay.
So we have it? Keep it in your, uh, to-do list. It's coming back to us. Okay, thank you, Parvise.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time and we'll look at it in detail. Next item is, uh, item 10B, which is consideration of authorization to issue a request for proposal for design and preparation of plans, specifications and cost estimates for installation of a natural grass or an all-weather synthetic turf athletic field at Heather Park. Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on October 23rd, at your regular city council meeting, uh, the city council directed staff to develop this request for proposal. It would provide, uh, a plan, design and construction, cost-benefit analysis for natural turf and the all-weather, uh, synthetic turf for the Heather School synthetic field. This would give you, the city council, the information you need to make a decision at a later date. Uh, so tonight, uh, we're returning just with the RFP and seeking authorization to release the RFP to, uh, selected firms. And at this point, I would.
Well, if I understand, Barry, the, the RFP will lead us eventually to a contract which will prepare plans and cost estimates for each alternative.
The, uh, RFP would be released, we would do, uh, the due process to select a firm, uh, with the cost for the services. We would return to council and at that point, council decided they wish to authorize those services be done and they would know what the cost is. Uh, if council does authorize that, uh, the selected firm would go out and develop costs for both natural and synth- installation and design specs for both natural and synthetic turf. Uh, and at some point, the council would have to, that, that would give you the information you need to decide, uh, which type of turf you'd choose to use.
Okay. Questions?
I actually had a question. Um, on page three of the proposal requirements, you're stipulating that the proposal must, um, specify the approach, et cetera, et cetera, for both synthetic and natural grass alternatives. Is there a reason why we're not saying, um, for either or both, synthetic or natural grass?
It was my understanding that that was the direction of the city council, that you had not decided which type of turf you wanted, that you wanted information to make that decision.
But we may be receiving, um, proposals, or is this, this is from a consultant, not actually someone that would actually be doing the work?
Right.
No, it'd be somebody who would actually do the work, not installing the field physically, but doing the plans and specs and the cost analysis. And they would come back to you and say, okay, for a natural and synthetic turf, you would get this much play, this is what it would cost you, here's the plans, the specs, et cetera. And I think Parvise got a little, uh, clarification going in.
Thank you.
Uh, basically what we're asking the consultants, to give us a proposal, two proposals. One, to design and prepare plans, specifications for natural grass turf and provide construction cost estimate. And one proposal will be for design and preparation of, uh, construction document for installation of all-weather synthetic turf and the estimated, uh, construction cost. And it gives you some maintenance costs of each alternative per year. So that information, and the staff will select one of the consultants and their proposals. Then those proposals will come to you, how much it will cost to design the synthetic turf and how much a construction will cost, how much it will cost to design the natural grass turf, how much the construction cost is, what are the advantages of one versus the other? At that point, city council decides which turf, uh, you want to install. And based on that proposal, you sign a contract just for the consultant to design whether the grass, natural turf or the synthetic turf. So there is, there's no decision for the council to make as far as, um, natural grass or synthetic turf at that point, but, but at that point, you have all the details that you can make the decision.
At this point, there's no cost.
No cost.
So I'd like to go back to your statement about all the details. I, I don't quite think so. I think that as we go through this process and as we, and by the way, I'm in favor of the process, I think, I think developing information is good. But as you all know, I'm not in favor of artificial at this point. So I think that before we issue a contract to get a, uh, the study going, we should, um, reacquaint ourselves with the impact, uh, both in terms of additional playtime or playtime. In other words, how much playtime do we get out of grass? How much do we get out of artificial? What we're really do in terms of adding people into Heather, uh, the timings of it, um, the, uh, the traffic, uh, issues that surround it. And Barry has, I think, these numbers already that came out in the field committee. Uh, so we have a good look at what actually happens, uh, um, to that field, whether it's grass or whether it's artificial. And then secondly, I'd like to get a, a handle on the EIR requirements. We've talked about them. Uh, I have represented that we will require an EIR. I think that's correct. Uh, I don't know what extent an EIR will be. Uh, I'd like to get some information as to how that will be done, the timing process, the cost. And so we bring that to the table as well. So your part, uh, Parvise, I think is okay. But Barry has a burden of adding additional information to it before we issue a contract for the proposal, which will give us more information on the actual use.
You're not issuing any contract. All the information that you just mentioned will come to you when we have the proposal.
Okay, so.
Two proposals, uh, advantages, disadvantages of all, whether EIR is required for one or the other, that what does it do to the traffic, all of that. And that's the time you decide whether to sign a contract or the consultant to design one or the other.
I can't, I can't authorize a contract to design a project if I don't have all the information on that plate.
You're not authorizing any contracts.
I know, not now, but when we go through this process.
Exactly.
We make a selection, then we will.
Right.
So when we do, is when I'd like to see the other information as well.
Exactly. That's when you can see all of that information.
Sure. Okay. So any other questions for?
Just one quick question.
Can I ask for point of clarification, please?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so if, if the council authorizes releases tonight, we'll send it out and what's left firm will come back to you and you decide whether it authorize spending the money to have them. You'll pick between, you know, you, you're.
We will have a discussion.
Here's my, here's my clarification question. I apologize. Um, what additional information do you want besides what's listed here?
I would like to know what the impact of either of these surfaces will be.
Okay.
So that before we auth- actually authorize money for someone to make a study, what are the impacts in terms of the neighborhood, uh, uh, use, the neighborhood, uh, all the neighborhood factors we've heard about for years? And, and I think that relates to the time of play, artificial versus natural. It certainly refers to, uh, the time of day in terms of traffic and all the other components, the quality of life components that lay on top of this. I really think we need to see those before we actually spend money for a proposal. And then we may get a, a, a valued judgment as to whether we should proceed or not.
Through, through the chair, um, uh, Mayor Davids has made the point about the environmental impact report and possibly this getting held up and so forth. So if, if planning staff or if Ms. Cullinan can take a look at this and give us her best estimate and what, what types of things might be involved in, in EIR, potential EIR process and what those potential mitigations might be, staff's best judgment, then I think we'll be able to have the information that Mayor Davids has requested, that information, the, the financial information, we should be able to, uh, study it with some materials and come to a decision.
I have discussed that with plan director. I have discussed that with Plan Director. All of this information will be in the staff report when we bring the proposal back to you.
The other thing that I would add to that also is, because this is not a city-owned site, I know there's been some discussion about whether or not we can use some types of funding on this or not measure, is it measure G funds? And along the same lines, I think that we should also either have let the school board know, or at least gotten some, some form of agreement, more than just a verbal, yeah, if you want to put a full-size field up there, we're going to let you do it, so that we start to, there's a couple of things that have to occur somewhat simultaneously to making any kind of decision about any of these. And I think the EIR is probably one, funding is probably another, and certainly an agreement with the school board about the use and the maintenance and the, the investment that the city is proposing to make in Heather. One, either way that this goes, I think all need to come together relatively at the same time.
And also, in response to that, we should have another two-plus-two meeting prior to the time that these proposals would come back to staff. And I know on the agenda for our next meeting is to discuss the lease and how the school board feels about the Heather situation, so we should have more information.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for council or for staff, but if, if one votes in favor of this, what I'm hearing from staff is, we're, we're entering into the funnel, we're narrowing ourselves down to just this field and these two projects, and that's it. And all the other stuff that we have ever talked about, at least in a timing perspective, gets left pretty far behind. Is that the case?
I think that's, I think that's true, but what we will find out from this is what the mechanics, what the technical problems are, what the, you know, what, what the cost will be, what we'll come enough, we'll come away with enough from the RFP to, I think, get a feel for, for what this field is all about. And it certainly doesn't translate to others, but it gives us a start on this one, which seems to be where the pressure is at this point.
So, is it fair enough to still have the position or feeling that, one, myself, I don't really care to know this information, because I don't, I don't see this going down the correct path? As I stated the last time, I spent, you know, half a day out just touring fields and looking at them, and, and to me, to, for example, you know, I hear the problem with Heather is gophers. I go down to Tierra Linda, they have not only gophers, but every other problem a field could possibly have, including one field that isn't even a field. So, when I, you know, when I look at this in terms of priority, and I understand the position of, you know, others on this council, but it's not my position, so-
Okay.
I don't think I could vote for this.
All right.
I just had one follow-up question. In terms of, I noticed that the responses to this proposal are due back, Barry, are you collecting them, or are the, I'm seeing the two of you up there at the podium, are you tag teaming this, so that-
I'll be the project manager. Parvise helped me put, helped me write the RFP because of his vast experience. I'll serve as the project manager. I'll have a team to select it, the best firm. We do some interviews, check references, select the best firm, negotiate cost if we have to, then at that point, we return to council and say, does council want to spend that money to go out and do this?
Well, I would just like to encourage that the two of you work together, because I know Parvise brings a tremendous amount of public works experience to this, and-
Well, actually, any project, even Parks project, when it comes to design-construction, becomes a public works project anyway.
That's automatic.
After that, after the selection of the consultant, Barry is the project manager, after that, it becomes public works project, it becomes probably be the-
And then, at some point, it gets handed back to Parks and Rec.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have one more question, then. Why don't their ties match?
It came close on SUSE, didn't it?
It's our attempted, our attempted individualism.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? We have one request to speak, Diana Paradise. And Diana represents the Heather Neighbors.
Yes, I do. 1020 Hewitt Drive. I just learned today that there was going to be a hearing that had a comment about the, about the fields, and I have nothing planned to say, but I just wanted to share with you a perspective, and I am here to represent the Heather Neighbors, which is now growing to be hundreds of people who are profoundly concerned and very, many disgruntled, loss of faith on the city council for the persistent desire to do something with Heather that could have a severe effect on the quality of life. And thank you, Mayor Davis, for saying this. I should, I should see all of you jumping up and saying, where's the EIR report for this, before we move into any decision-making? So, I want to thank you from all of us and the neighbors. We are very disgruntled, and we have lost enormous faith through this process. We're exhausted, we're worried, some people are actually selling their homes, because there are hundreds of families who could be greatly affected from the lights, and I don't care what anybody says, lights, sound, security, impact to our homes. I've been living here in San Carlos, my family and I, for 26 years. We've owned homes here, and we love this town, but my husband and I are seriously talking about leaving, should this occur. And I think you need to understand, people who have built their lives, and, and, please don't smile, it's not comfortable for me, this is our, our home, our livelihoods, our peace of mind, this is our homes, and the kind of conversation about having floodlights and, and, and sports until 10 o'clock at night in our home is absolutely inexcusable. We already are, we, we accept the Highlands, we hear, you have no idea how much sound we get from Highlands. It is, I can literally hear coaches, parents, I can hear the refs speaking, I can hear words. I live seven houses down from Hewitt, it's an echo chamber in that area. And we say, yes, we love kids, I'm, I'm in education, I'm, I'm a teacher, for God's sake, everything for the kids is my view. But when we hear that there's going to be a sports facility in our home, in our residential area, supporting adults of the Bay Area for sports, it's inexcusable, and it's a very diminishing aspect to the quality of San Carlos. So, in your thinking in this process, thank you for having an environmental report, we need it, we don't need to be moving forward and making votes and, and seeing the cost of artificial and the conduits and all this. I really caution you all to please think very seriously about this for a long-term impact on homes, hundreds of homes, at the quality of living here in San Carlos. So, thank you very much, and, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paradise. Any other comments from council or discussion?
I would move authorization of issuance of the RFP for design and preparation of the plan, specification, and cost estimates for installation of natural grass or all-weather synthetic turf athletic fields at Heather School.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilmember Doherty, seconded by Vice Mayor Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
No. Well, that brings us to the last item, which is consideration of appointments to city council subcommittees and ad hoc committees for 2007. And I'm sure we can whip through this. You all have a, a copy of the committee assignments for 2006. First question is, does anyone want to opt out of what they have?
Yes.
Matt?
I would like to opt out of the two-plus-two, because the only reason I went on there is I just figured, and this was just me personally, when I was the mayor, I thought it would be a good place for the mayor to be, but don't necessarily see a reason to continue there. And I would like to lighten my load on some of these other bodies that I serve on, but I'd be open to some of those. I know I was just put on the library JPA, and I suppose that would be one that would be nice to get off of. Airport roundtable is another, but I realize for most folks, that's like going, being sent to Siberia, so.
It's one of those, someone's got to do it things, you know?
Got to do it.
But, how about the land use committee? Is that-
Airport land use committee, they like the person who's on airport roundtable to also be on ALUC, because it's both dealing with airports. So, if you got one, you got the other.
Okay.
It's not a have-to, but it's typically done that way.
Anything else?
I think just those two would be fine.
Okay. Councilmember Doherty?
Well, I was just going to say, I sat on two-plus-two for years, and I don't have any issue if you'd like me to go back onto that one. I'd be more than happy to, to pick up Matt's.
Okay.
But, other than that-
Brad, are you okay on two-plus-two?
Yes.
Everything's okay for Inga?
Yeah, and in fact, the other one too is, it, there seems to be some synergies between the emergency services council and advanced life support.
Yeah.
Although, I've served on emergency services council for, I guess, about the last five or six years, so, but there's also synergies, I think, between that and South County Fire, so it could go either way.
Does, does advanced life support meet twice a year? Is that the schedule?
It doesn't meet that all that frequently, but the one does require that you be on the fire board.
It does, okay. So, you guys need to hold on to that.
I think that's ALS, isn't it? Yeah, right.
Inga, you're still okay for emergency services?
Yep.
And for trust fund?
Uh, yes.
And backup on SBSA?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. And then, also, these development assets, we haven't really, that's kind of, hasn't gone very far.
Why don't we take that off? Is there any reason to hold it?
I think we could probably, yeah, take that one off. The other one is, I think we should think about is PAMF, that we may, or may not need to continue to have that.
Let's, let's hold off on that a moment if we can.
Okay.
Athletic field use, I think this is over with. This was our actual committee effort.
Mm-hmm.
So, I wouldn't see anything more happening there. HIA, Inga, that works for you?
Uh, I have a tough time getting to HIA.
No, that's a midday, isn't it?
It's once a month every Thursday, so if someone else, I mean, I-
I would guess that Bob and I could tag team on that every one.
Why don't you do that? Why don't you, who wants to be lead, just so that we have someone in front?
What day is it?
It's the first Thursday of every month.
Lunch?
It's lunch at the Vans.
Lunch?
Lunch? That's good. Bob's there.
Lunch at the Vans.
No, 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 no. No, I think, I'd be happy to be the lead, and then we can alternate.
That sounds good, yeah.
That'd be great.
And you two are also on the Grand Valley, or the Grand Boulevard Task Force, is that okay?
Yeah, I've been going to, I missed a couple, but, or one of those, but I, I'm scheduled for December next week, in fact, I think, and I'm scheduled to go there, yeah.
Okay, so, who wants to take a lead on the airport roundtable and airport land use?
Well, I'd be willing to go, maybe we can tag team that one? I mean, I don't know, I-
To switch positions?
I mean, I just, I don't think I can make every single Wednesday, the first Wednesday, I mean, you know, they just, I don't think I can do that. Because A-BAG, oh, A-BAG, excuse me, CKAG meets every second Thursday.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was suggesting that it is like being in Siberia, but if, by letting go of the two-plus-two and, and library JPA, I'd be fine with staying on airport.
You're, you're okay?
I'd be there, you know, if we need to, if we need to substitute, I'd be happy to, to go.
Okay.
That's fine.
You don't have to call me.
So, I'd like Bob to carry on with CKAG, and I'd like to back him up with Brad. Not to say that Inga can't do it, but I think Brad coming in as mayor next year, presumably, it'd be good to have him some exposure there. So, is that okay, Inga?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then, the two-plus-two, we got Brad and Inga. I've got city selection committee, congestion management, air quality. You'll never make a three o'clock meeting there, so why don't we take Inga out? And we'll back it up with Matt.
Is that SBSA?
No, this is, this is CKAG.
Oh.
Let's put Matt as a backup.
On which one?
On congestion management and air quality.
Yeah.
We'll keep emergency services council the same, housing trust. You want to back up there, Inga?
Uh, if there's someone that would be interested?
I'd be interested in housing.
Okay.
Okay. Governing, air, library governing board. I'd be glad to take that.
You just want to switch, then?
Yeah.
Reverse the order?
Yeah.
That's fine.
There's a new, a new CK committee, I'd like to be a part of, the regional housing needs assessment. I really don't know what that is, but I'd be glad to take the lead if Bob can take the, the next, the second.
Sure.
And we'll figure out what it's all about. You need any help on the educational foundation, Brad?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Unless somebody else is interested in backing up, but I'd-
Bob's happy with the San Mateo County Convention, they have good lunches as well.
Very happy with that.
I'll stay with Sister City. I don't know that we really need anyone unless someone liked to get involved in Sister City Committee.
If there's a hockey tournament, I'd like to go in your stead.
Well, we're currently working on Nicaragua. It's, it's not quite hockey.
I was in-
Soccer game, I'll go in your stead.
Okakota? Yeah?
Okay, well, you're all, you're all in the game for Sister City, somewhere along the line. South Bayside, that's an eight o'clock meeting, I'll lead, and Inga can follow. South County Fire, you gentlemen have already agreed to stay there the rest of your life, I believe.
Rest of it?
Uh, Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance, that's, Brad's not going to make that at eight o'clock, but I can do that.
Okay.
And we'll give-
P3 doesn't exist anymore, right?
That's correct.
No, P3's out.
Yeah, that's out.
Now that we're getting into development programs and so forth, PELA Medical, I, I think it would be good to keep this going, and I'd like to volunteer to, to be in it. Would either Matt or Inga like to join me, or would someone else like to join me?
I'm sorry, which, are you? Oh, PAMF?
PAMF, yeah. These, these are also daytime meetings, typically.
Um, I would like to stay on that.
Okay.
Gee, so would I. Is it the PAMF application we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Matt, the only reason why I would sort of argue to stay on it is because of the history I have with HIA and the property owners down there. So, that would be, when they first came to San Carlos, I was pretty much facilitating with, between them and the Harbor Industrial Association.
If everybody, I mean, three is, can we have three?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Then it makes it a-
Oh, sorry.
I guess that answers that question.
We may, Inga, depending upon the nature of what happens, this, these could be daytime, that could be difficult. So, we're at to play that by ear, and we may have to pull someone else in if, if it's necessary.
Yeah, the issue with that becomes then Brown Act, potential Brown Act, because originally with, I forget which other committee it was, we started trying to swap people out, and it, then, if you can't, it's not that one.
The question then is, would you be able to make the meetings? Because we've tried to schedule in the past and haven't been able to have meetings.
No, I'd be able to make them.
Okay, we'll give it a try.
Okay.
That gets us through the stated committees, and then we have the, the boards and commissions, these are liaison positions.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like you were the only one who responded to the city clerk.
I responded.
You answered that, didn't you?
I, I responded.
What did you have?
Well, I'm sorry. Pardon me. I didn't, so I apologize, but I'm willing to go on planning, and senior citizens and youth advisory.
Senior citizens and youth advisory. And what'd you have, Inga?
I- I had park and rec and youth advisory, I think, and planning, if you needed me
And Matt?
I had youth, BPAC, TNT, that was it. Although TNT and BPAC potentially, I suppose, could be, might be joined together at some point.
And Brad?
Park and rec, I put down natural resources. I wasn't sure if we were going to either divvy that up into separate parts or, but natural resources. And I put down EDAC and art and culture.
Mr. Mayor, that reminds me of fluke. I don't know if we're, if it's on the list or not, but...
For which one?
Fluke.
Fluke?
Flood, fluke?
We don't have a liaison with fluke. Do we need a liaison with fluke?
Well, fluke ends on June 30th the next year. I wasn't sure whether you were going to have that on your ad hocks or not.
Yeah.
You know, under natural resources, there's a creek sort of discipline within that, maybe fluke and creek discipline, and that can be a divvy section of natural resources.
Yeah.
Because I think natural resources are so broad in this expanse that there could be a lot of interaction. Might be good to split that up. What do you think, Mayor Davis?
I think it probably would be. You'd be the one to take that?
Which one?
Fluke?
Yeah.
Inga, let's go back to you. You want art and culture?
No. If you want me to.
Let me try again here.
Well...
Well, Brad already, excuse me, through the chair.
Yeah, Brad wanted art and culture.
Oh, did he? Okay.
We only need one for each one, right? Mayor Davis?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, the question is park and rec. Brad has experience with the park and rec group, which could service wisely. Inga has experience with planning. Bob has youth and senior citizens and youth. Inga, what if you take planning?
All right.
That's a, that's a pretty big nut. And Matt has traffic and fluke and BPAC, they'll be coming together, BPAC and traffic. Bob has senior center, youth advisory, he's got a lot of other stuff on top, so he'll be pretty busy. Brad have park and rec and some form of natural resources after we get through our hearing. And I'll take EDAC, art and culture. The building community task force, we'll have one, maybe two more meetings. And so, that won't last long.
I would only ask, just in some of the limited conversations I've had about natural resources, that it is such a broad thing, it might be good to have a backup, council member, depending on what the time commit becomes over time.
Well, that looks like an Inga job.
For...
For backup on natural resources?
So, I have planning and backup of natural resources.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, you've all, you've all reported in. I think we got everything covered. We'll prepare a new list and have that available at the next meeting. And if anything else we think of that needs to be brought into it. Okay, that brings us to item 12, which is adjournment, and we want to adjourn tonight in honor of Brian Moore, who's celebrating an unnamed birthday. And we wish you a happy one, Brian. There's not much left. You got an hour and a half or so if you want to go out and party. Back to you. And we'll see, everyone have a happy holiday season. We'll, barring a need for a separate meeting, we'll be back the first, or the second Friday in January. Meeting's adjourned.